Welcome, everybody, to the February 6, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, phones, other electronic communication devices, and agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The Commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form and locate the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Hennies, located in the lower right side of the dais. I see we have a bunch of people here today, and for public comment is the same process with the speaker request forms, just so you know. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll have Commissioner Drew do the moment of silence reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Mr. Lassiter.
I'd like to adjourn the amend. Oh, my goodness, I amend the agenda and move public comment to item 7A. So that would be moving item 18 to 7B.
7B.
Yes, sir.
Right after the executive session. Okay, and I have one other change we need to add on there, that executive session that we add, it's not only contractual penny litigation, SDCL 125-23, but also B for personnel issue per CDCL 125-21. Is there any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Drews.
I'd move the agenda to be approved as amended.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinect. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to the Board of Commissioners' consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items are removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 16, 2024. Number six is to surplus two vehicles for the purpose of trade-in: one 2010 Dodge Journey asset number 37961, and one 2010 Dodge Journey asset number 62889, as submitted by the Department of Vehicleization.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This brings us to item number seven, which is executive session for SDCL 125-2 for contractual 2-3 with contractual penny litigation, and for personal issue, CDCL 125-21. Look for motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
We have to go into executive session.
Second.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'd look for a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And as I said, we were moving public comment up to our next agenda from item 18 to A. And so, public comment, items from the public per South Dakota CDCL 125-1, speaker request forms required at this. It's a time for the Members of the Public to discuss or express their concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting the county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and entrance. I will say at the beginning of this, we do have, the Commission does have a contractual executive session meeting at the end of the agenda today for discussion with Central State's Fair Board on this. So I wanted to give you guys a little heads up on that, and Mr. Lassiter did bring up that we talked about, the process did change from the last time we talked, and so we felt moving this up ahead of the agenda to give you guys your voice before that, so you don't have to sit through the whole little meeting to see what's coming out of the executive session. So with that, I will start with the public comment period, and the first one I have is Ray. Ray, you know I ain't gonna. I do this every time, don't I?
It's all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Commission. I'm Ray Lautenschlager. America is a nation of laws, and our governments at every level are established and more importantly limited by law. But laws become meaningless if the people are not willing to enforce them, and that's why we are here today. The South Dakota Constitution promises that the right of the people to keep and bear arms in self-defense shall not be denied. And South Dakota Legislature has made it very clear that no county, city, or township has authority to regulate firearms in South Dakota. This Board of County Commissioners has no other rights, privileges, or immunities than those granted to it by state law, and that law expressly denies the right or authority to regulate firearms. Anyone arguing that the Commission may enter into a contract allowing its agent to do what the Commission itself is forbidden to do is obviously attempting to circumvent the clear intent of the Legislature. If this Board of Commissioners signs a contract with Central State's Fair and then allows them to regulate firearms contrary to state law, then the Commission itself becomes equally guilty of violating the law. The language additions that Commissioner Lassiter proposes to place in the contract with Central State's Fair Incorporated do not change any of the requirements of the contract because it already specifies that they must comply with all state and local laws. That should be sufficient, but apparently, some officials seem to be ignorant of what the law actually says. It is necessary, therefore, to spell out in the contract the specific laws which apply. Central State's Fair has been getting away with violating the law because the people of this county were unaware of it. That is no longer the case. I would like to ask everyone who is here today in support of the law to please stand Mr. Chairman, we urge you to place this language into the contract and then ensure that Central State's Fair follows the law without exception. We will be watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next, I have Pat Bowman.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Bowman. I'm from Custer County. I've been honored to speak here before, and you know my opposition to the firearms restrictions at the fair. I'm just here today to reiterate that and express my desire to expedite decisions on this. It's good to hear they're going into executive session this afternoon, or later this morning. Will you be coming out of that session and be speaking anymore on the topic of the firearms at the fair?
Well, I think, once we have those discussions, we can come out and give a good idea where we're going to go.
And so, possibly, you'll speak after that session?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll be anxious to hear what happens there. And I pretty much echo the sentiment of the previous speaker. And I know that Pennington County is a Second Amendment sanctuary county, and keep up the good work on that. I think we can use that to our benefit and support firearms, support the Second Amendment at the fair.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
Tina Mulaney.
Thank you for allowing me. I'm Tina Mulaney from District 35 out in the Valley. To let you know how important this issue is with me, I'm here when I should be at the State Capitol, listening to bills. Without our Second Amendment, none of the other rights really matter because we need to know that we have the right to protect ourselves, our families, and are allowed to be called on if needed. And I felt that the Central State's Fair putting up those metal detectors was discriminatory, absolutely discriminatory, because the only ones that were actually affected were the ones that were walking into it. None of the performers, none of the participants, none of the carnival people, none of the So it was an illusion for protection. I greatly appreciate you taking the opportunity to really consider the issue, to know that the public wants you to consider this issue and make sure that it is following the people because the state of South Dakota's motto is, "Under God, the people rule." So please pay attention to what we're asking, and we greatly appreciate you considering the proposed language, and we hope that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. And thank you, guys, for being here today. You guys have been consistent and persistent in showing up. And as I said, we're going to have discussions in executive session about contractual at the end of the meeting with the Fair Board leadership, and that'll be the first time the full Board has sat down with them. So I think there is going to be some results from that, and we can get some information when we walk out from that. Thank you. Next, that brings us up to item number eight, Cindy Moller.
We're waiting for Cindy. Thank you all for showing up. We appreciate it. I did see Cindy sitting right over there.
And this is item eight, items from the auditor Cindy Moller, and this is a renewal of retail on off-sale wine and cider license for the Marina at Sheridan Lake.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. And as you just said, this is a renewal of a wine and cider license for the Marina at Sheridan Lake. I would ask for approval of that.
Is there any questions for Cindy on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale wine and cider license for the Marina at Sheridan Lake and release the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes. Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, this brings us up to, thank you, Cindy, items from the Sheriff, Brian Mueller.
Good morning, Commission. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. I'm here before you today to talk about an FTE, adding an FTE to the jail. This is something I visited with you about during budget last year, and then during the launch of the IGNITE that we did last spring, that we were going to try to add another teacher, similar to what we do at the Juvenile Services Center at the Pennington County Jail, specifically to work with GED-level education. And I worked closely together with Nicole Swigger, Superintendent of Rapid City Area Schools, last year. She led us include our adults at the jail, 18 to 20 years old, on the student count this fall that they used for funding for the school, and they were able to secure an additional $50,000 of funding through the school to provide a teacher at the Pennington County Jail. So I'm here today before you to ask for authorization to add one FTE for this teacher position into the jail budget. It'll be supported 100% by revenues this year, and a majority of that position will be supported by revenues going forward. I anticipate a full-time teacher probably costing us between $15,000 to $20,000 above what the school is doing with the $50,000. So in 2025, there'll be a little bit of tax support in that, but they gave us a pretty good increase on our education revenue out of the Juvenile Services Center this year that exceeds that $15,000 to $20,000. So we all have a little bit of skin in the game going forward, but I hope to continue to work with the school on that count year after year and maybe get that adjusted to be 100% supported by revenue moving forward.
Brian, could you give us just a little summary of what IGNITE does?
Yes, we, you know, we started this IGNITE initiative last March. We have a full-time coordinator right now. We're working in the jail to provide GED-level education, some counseling. We're working on getting a full-time funded counselor working in the jail. We're doing about two days a week of counselor activities in the jail right now, doing assessments and pre-treatment. And then we're working towards the goal of getting our work program up and running between May and June this year. That'll be 50% supported by Rapid City, 50% by the Commission for the staffing for that, up to 16 beds of work program. So we can work on basic life skills, basic job skills, some drug and alcohol, substance abuse issues, and then try to turn some of these mid-low level offenders back out into the community, increase their accountability, and reduce recidivism. So we're having really good success. Actually, the inmates are really embracing this concept. We do the equivalent of, you know, a lot of staff worth of work inside of the jail with inmate labor. We've incorporated a lot of what we're doing with these IGNITE initiative principles into what we're doing in the jail, and then we'll move that over to the care campus for this work program this spring.
Any questions for Brian?
Chairman.
Mr. Haggar.
So I agree with the program. I just wondered, how many programs? Did you drop any other programs that we had that weren't going to be basically having good outcomes to them, Brian?
Well, this was an initiative, not necessarily a program. So we're just looking at trying to get traction with these mid-to-low level offenders right now that are churning through the system over and over and over again, you know, without changing behaviors and changing the outcomes.
And I can appreciate that, but we have a lot of diversion programs that we added to in the last few years that I wondered if we found that. And I think you had told me before you had dropped some of those because you moved it over into other areas, which makes sense. And when Kevin Tom was here, he also said that some of the outcomes, that's why they changed the programs, and people don't understand, when we change the programs, it means some of the stuff was working and some of it wasn't. And I think people forget that sometime on our programs. They're just basically, they're testing for diversion of how to make the system better. And when that program doesn't work, they either drop it, or they take the good out of it and use the outcomes that have worked and moved them forward. And that's why I'm talking about outcomes, not that you're doing anything wrong, Brian. In fact, you're doing everything right when you're doing this because we've done it at JSC, and we've proven outcomes at JSC for GEDs, and it gives people opportunity when they get out or why they're in there to better themselves. I just wondered if we did move any of the programs, take some of those outcomes of those programs that weren't working and move them so that money can be used hopefully for some of this IGNITE because this IGNITE looks like, just, and I was at the opening of this, was a program that looked like it had success because bottom line is, if you're not teaching people life skills, and we know that from what I do at our motels, if you're not teaching people life skills, then it's hard for them to move forward because those little things make a huge difference, and that's what you're doing. So I'm not against it. I just wondered how many programs that we maybe can drop and use some of the money for that as well, so.
Chairman, if I may. All of the diversion programs that we have in Pennington County are currently under the State's Attorney's Office, so State's Attorney Retschel, you know, brings that information to you guys pretty regularly and reviews the statistics. They're constantly evaluating, updating, and making changes based on results. I don't have any diversion programs necessarily directly under the Sheriff's Office for the Sheriff's Budget, but what I can tell you hasn't been working is taking these low-level offenders, putting them into jail for a short period of time, putting them back out on bond. You can't put them on electronic monitoring because a lot of them don't have a place to charge it. You can't put them on 24/7, a lot of these people, because they don't show up. And so the judges and the State's Attorney need another mechanism to deal with these low-to-mid-level offenders to change some behaviors in our community. And that's one of those.
Chairman, follow-up. So I agree because I have those offenders and those people in my motels as well. And again, you start with your life skills, and then we add to their life skills. And the main thing is that you're treating them with respect, you're showing that they mean something by trying to educate and do bigger and better things for them. That's why I said I'm for this because I have some of the offenders and some of the people in our motels, and it makes a huge difference, that caring spirit that you're not just letting them out and going, "Go ahead, do whatever you want." We're saying we're offering other programs to make a difference in their life, and not all of them are going to take that. We found that out, but a lot of them, once you show, and that's all it takes, it's weird. You can teach people how to clean their rooms and do stuff. That's all it takes for people to have respect enough to do the next step or to want to respect what you're doing. So I think it's huge for the Sheriff and the Police Department to say, "We do care. We do care what you do when you go out there, and we want to make a difference in your life." So again, I'm not against this. I just, and yeah, I understand the programs inversion, but sometimes if you get too many programs, they're coinciding sometimes with the others. So in this program, I think you'll have good success just because I do it myself as well or in the community for people. So thank you for what you guys are doing, and I think the Police Department is well on board with it, with your chief, so.
Is there anybody else I'd like to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
Brian, I'm encouraged by the fact that Rapid City Area Schools stepped up to be one of the participants or stakeholders in this and also help with the financing, the program. I don't know what it is. I call it a program, but I'm glad that they stepped up to the bat because I think we need to work together on this.
Thank you. And they are a great partner. They fund three full-time positions at our juveniles facility. I'm currently using about one day of work from those JSC teachers in the jail as a stopgap till we get this position hired, so we know there's a need for it. And those teachers are anxious to get this position hired so they can go focus on the number of juveniles that we have in our facility out there right now.
Accessible.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize the Sheriff's Office to add one new FTE to the jail for the IGNITE program in 2024, a teacher position at DBMB 24.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Haggar. Discussion, one last comment before. I agree, Brian. I think this is a very good program. I mean, the average stay for some of the inmates is, for some, is quite a while, so it's a good environment to better themselves.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I do, I congratulate you, Brian, for the initiative that you took in getting IGNITE going and proving successful, obviously, and so I just wish it more success. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, that brings us up to item number 10, items from ESCC and Dispatch. I recognize this Director Kevin Carley.
Good morning. Kevin Carley, Director, Emergency Services Communication Center. I have in front of you this morning a proposal to enact shift differential pay for the hourly employees at the Emergency Services Communication Center. About 65% of our employees who leave and transition to other jobs go to Monday through Friday day hours. In some cases, they take a reduction in pay to do so. Working a 24/7, 365-day operation is difficult. It's demanding physically and mentally, and it doesn't work well for people who are striving for a good work-life balance with their family. I think as a county, it's time we acknowledge that difficulty. City of Rapid City and the state of South Dakota both offer shift differential pay. Private businesses such as Monument Healthcare offer shift differential pay. If approved, it would allow for $2 per hour between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM, seven days per week. In my letter to the Commission, I asked it to be a pilot program, and when I say that, I mean to be the first county agency to enact shift differential pay, and we can assess it to see if it actually does impact our recruiting and our retention, which I believe fully that it will. We're currently down nine positions. We were only able to hire one qualified applicant during our last hiring cycle. I believe this is something that we have to be able to offer so that we can draw qualified applicants to county employment. It's about an $83,000 increase with roll-ups to the remainder of 2024 budget, which we can absorb, and it shouldn't be a problem. Even if we can't absorb all of that at the end of the year, I would just simply come and ask for the spending authority to have that money, spend that money from the 911 Reserve Fund. I spoke with the auditor. She said it can be handled as out-of-class pay in Spring Brooks, so there'll be a process in place for us to be able to do it. And bear in mind, as we move into the 2025 budget year, because of how our budget year were, we've produced 60% of our own revenue. The rest is a one, two-thirds, one-third split with the county. So even in 2025, the county's share of that would be about $27,000. And again, if I have to fund that in 2025 from the 911 Reserve Fund, we have the ability to do that, so. And this was supported by our User Board 100%. They voted in favor when I presented it to them as well. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Chairman.
Mr. Haggar.
How many employees are you talking about, Kevin, did you say?
It's all of our hourly employees, so it would be about 47, I believe, 48.
And how many employees do you have total?
58.
Okay. What I like is that you figured out how much it costs you this year, what is going to affect your budget for next year, because that's the main thing why a lot of this exceptional pay or exception to pays that I haven't done because we do not have that figured in our budgets for this year of 2024. $27,000, you said you could absorb, plus you, 60% of the revenue you make, that's huge for making a decision on this. And number two, I like you having out front and having a frank discussion on what's happening. The public for transparency appreciates that. And for me, I do that way. They don't come in and say things that are not factual because we do not discuss a lot of this out front. So I'll keep saying it, transparency is everything, and when you put it out front, it also shows that, you know, you're prepared at $83,000 to put it in your budget, that you're nine positions down. That's huge for the public, and it's huge for me to know that difference. And also to know that 2025, you're not going to be affecting our budget, and by $27,000 is a little bit different than if every department was in 2025 from those exceptional pays. Where $27,000 would be huge for making a decision for me. So thank you, Kevin. I'm in agreement with this today. I think it's huge. I deal with 911 with you guys a lot. I see how they have to work holidays in different areas, no matter what. You don't have a choice. You're switched. And what they have to deal with every day, just like our sheriff and our police departments, that's a lot to take in mentally and physically on the person, so I agree with it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Kevin, thanks for bringing this to us. Everyone knows my background is EMS, so nowhere have I ever seen an EMS or anything related to that on the civilian side. Obviously, DOD is a little bit different, but on the civilian side, not have shift differential for evening time. I mean, that's one of the things that drives individuals to say whether or not they want to work in that position, but also some of them volunteer for night shift because of that reason, and that's usually the hardest shift to actually get someone to cover. And since this has given that incentive, if you will, it's one of those things that will help. Hopefully, we'll see how it impacts your ability to fill those slots where people really don't want to work unless there's an extra incentive.
Yes, thank you.
And Kevin, I'll say the same thing. I think it's good to see this as a pilot program to see if it works because it's not changing. It's an incentive to get them to work nights. Coming from... Coming from a person who worked out at a plant where I did night shift for 13 years, 12-hour shifts, you know, they only had 30 cents back then, back. And quite frankly, I've seen what's out there happening now. There's a lot of them, I think you're right in that range, you know, especially when it's nights and it's weekends. So I think that's a good number that you guys come up with. It makes me see that you guys did your research in the community, so I think, anxious to see it, and I know you and your crew have done some changing around and working with the employees and have tried some different things, and hopefully this will be another piece that will help work.
Yes, I agree. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make motion one, move to change the current position titles for all employees as current.
I'll do the first one.
A. Oh, got to go back up here, I'm sorry.
Riggs.
Now I'll go to motion one. Move to approve the shift differential pay for ESCC 911 Center at $2 an hour for the hours of 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, seven days a week, effective February 8th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and you did say the 18th?
Correct.
Okay. I thought I heard the eighth, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we come to item B, the revised position titles.
Yes, thank you. January 1st of 2024, remove to dedicated dispatcher councils, which means that we have dedicated fire dispatchers and dedicated law enforcement dispatchers. And the reason why we do that is the job is getting more complex. Cross-training is becoming more of an issue. It's becoming more difficult for dispatchers to move around the room and work different assignments every day and stay up on policies and procedures and different things for each agency. So we made the move to dedicated councils because we believe it's going to provide better service to our users and it's going to be less stressful for dispatchers and create a better environment for them. In doing that, we have to change or we have a need to change our job titles. We're not changing the pay on the top two tiers. Basically, what we're doing is we currently have four position titles, we're reducing that to three. The best way to explain it is we're doing away with the bottom tier and then relabeling the top three from 234 to 123. There's no change in pay to the top two. So the dedicated law enforcement dispatchers, the dedicated fire dispatchers, and those dispatchers that are cross-trained on both will stay at the same pay rate. It's still necessary to do some cross-training because we have to fill in for vacation and leave, plus I think it's just a good business practice to still have people cross-trained. By eliminating the bottom tier, that means that new employees will start at what is currently the Tier Two. What we've added, the responsibility of becoming an emergency medical dispatcher certified within the first 12 months. What that means is that it will result in a $2.15 per hour pay increase at that entry level. Again, that's the only level where we're asking for a pay increase, which will result in about $15,000 for the remainder of 224 if we fill all of our positions. We'll need to slightly adjust for eight existing employees to avoid compensation, which is one of the things that was requested by the HR department to make this successful. Again, that adjustment is going to cost about $15,000 for the remainder of 2024. My understanding and visiting with the auditor, in HR, we can do that through current county policy, through the current county promotional policy. So for a total of actually $27,000 is what the total for the remainder of 2024. I can absorb that amount. Again, if I can't, I would come back and ask for the spending authority to spend that from the 911 Fund. And again, if we roll that in, as we roll that into 2025, the county's share of that would be about $90,000. And that would allow us to move forward with the dedicated council with the correct job titles, which is, I think, something that's going to be successful for us.
Thanks, Kevin. Is there any questions?
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
So 24, the changes will be what, Kevin, for the amount?
Excuse me, it would be a total of $27,000 for both the pay increase, the starting pay, and the compensation adjustments for the eight current employees.
Okay, and then 25 is the 9,000.
Right, that would be the county's share in 25.
Okay, and then that's plus the absorbing the other that you just changed, or is that including that?
That's in addition to that, and over the last three years, we've had about $200,000 in unspent funds, and we, I don't project that will change any or change too much going into 2025 or in the remainder of 2024. So I don't believe that absorbing those funds is going to be a problem. And again, we've got money in the 911 Fund to take care of that, should we not be able to absorb it.
Okay, so 1, 2, and 3, what's the DBM on 1 and 2 and 3?
The DBM, the new DBM on 1 is going to be 23.
Which is, the pay changes from what to what? And I apologize, yesterday I was opening our motel, I would have called you, and you know I usually do, so I apologize.
So our current starting pay is at B22, it's at $20.18 an hour. That would move to a starting pay at B23, which would then be 22, 2240, I think, in there.
And number 2 is?
That would be then, the current position for a D2 is a B24, they remain at a B24.
Okay.
And the dispatcher 3, which is now a dispatcher 4, is at B31, that would remain at a B31.
Okay, that's kind of what I got, but I wanted to verify it. Boy, you're doing good. I couldn't remember all that, I was trying to figure it out in my brain even up here, so I appreciate this again. I like you being straightforward, so how does this affect? You're doing a wage scale study for department heads, are you having to change a lot of things for that wage scale because of the changes you're making today?
No, I don't believe so. We'll see, as you know, the compensation committee in the group is working on that, we're doing our share of that. I don't know for sure how that's going to affect our department, we just have to wait and see how that happens as we move forward.
Well, I appreciate that, because it looks like you're moving forward in a certain way, but you're also keeping it in budget lines, and you're thinking about positions that you have open and seeing what you could do to make that difference. Plus, in the instance which we're always at, when I was on the fire board, you're always there and promoting and taking care of also the firemen and making a separate, as you say, councils of different things and cross-training because you see issues. So you really kept ahead on your department, Kevin, on a lot of stuff, and I've watched it through the years, because I've been with you in 911 with Jerome and the rest of the firemen, so very impressive how you keep ahead of these things. And again, I like the transparency, how you bring your stuff forward so the public can understand what you're doing, because your position is huge in the 911 and what you do for the public. I didn't think they knew about the cross-training and all the different things in your department, and it's huge for when you're having an emergency, so I'm pretty impressed, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the commission? I'll just say, Kevin, I think the lower level, bringing that up, I think that's going to help. I think we were kind of bypassing that anyhow, so I think bringing it up to what it needs to be instead of the exceptions is good, bring forward, so I appreciate that.
Yes, I think so too, I think it's going to help with our recruiting quite a bit.
Yeah. I'd look for a motion.
Move approval.
Motion would be move to change the current position titles for all employees as current titled to reflect the following, dispatch 4 to dispatch 3, dispatch 3 to dispatch 2, dispatch 2 to dispatcher 1.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Move to approve the updated dispatcher 1 position description and to eliminate the dispatcher 4 position title.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, thank you. I have to offer some thanks to the auditor's office, Cindy Muller and Casey Island, and the HR department, Carol Bancroft, and also to Holly, because when we were working on this last week, it was, in my mind, it was just do it, but it turns out there's actually rules and regulations that we have to make sure we're in compliance with, and they helped me work through all that, and I couldn't have gotten it done without their help, so I appreciate very much what they did, so thank you.
Thanks for the team.
Mr. Chair, there's one more motion that's needed. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Move to set the DBM ratings for the position descriptions as followed, dispatcher 1 at B23, dispatcher 2 at B24, and dispatcher 3 at B31.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laster.
You're welcome. Didn't want you to walk out of here and have to come back next meeting.
I thought he was a little hesitant. Item number 11, items from equalization. Shannon Ripper.
Good morning, Shannon Ripper, Director of Equalization. One abatement request in front of you today, a simple one. We had a mobile home that was on the tax roll twice.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve the abatement application for tax year 2023 for number 53824, 1,0084632.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Number 12, items from fire administration, I recognize fire administrator Jerome Hart.
Jerome Hart, Penn State Fire Administrator. Before today, as a resolution, as required by South Dakota state statutes, to authorize us to request help from the state on fires that are in county jurisdiction. We have used this in my tenure a couple times, both on the Hawk Draw fire near Wasta and the Duhamel Flats fire. And this is for equipment and resources that are not in our normal suppression inventory, such as hand crews, aircraft, dozers, other specialized equipment. The listed personnel that are on there have all been approached and we sought their permission to put them on here. It's all senior leadership within the county, so if myself or the chairman or vice chairman of the fire service board are not available, we don't have a one-legged milk stool that we're able to move forward on this. Even looked at something in the trade publications this morning where one of the states out west, one of the counties, needed help, and it was all based on one person that wasn't available, and we never want to put our people in that kind of situation. Senior leadership within the county can easily verify that there is a problem, probably knows that people are requesting the help. The office will be issuing a guide to help you with that if you are called upon to do so, to make that authorization. It's not coming out of anybody else's budget, other than the fire budget or from your contingency budget. It is required by the state statutes through the rules, promulgation of rules, and we'll pass the resolution once it's signed on to the appropriate people at South Dakota Wildland Fire. We did add Commissioner Lassiter, he has the largest area that is under county jurisdiction where we could have something that causes a real problem. Again, the two times that we've used this in my tenure did stop the fire from becoming a real disaster, so it does help, and it's a good, it's the way the state has it laid out, and that's a procedure that we need to follow, make sure we have the proper people in place.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
I'm in agreement with this, in fact, I was the one they called a couple times, and it's something that was well-needed. It's not just Jerome that makes that decision, there's to the state and the different fire department areas, whether it be city, county, or Black Hills Wildland, so they all get together as a team and figure out what's the best thing moving forward, the best process to move forward on the fire, so I agree with this, and I appreciate him bringing it forward. I think Roskin and Travis are the next two they called for that, so that'd be nice, it's a good board, and like I said, they wouldn't be asking if they didn't need it.
Any further comments?
Sure.
Mr. Roskin.
So Jerome, do we update this every year then?
One time we didn't update it here a couple years ago, because there was no changes on the fire service board and no changes on the commission. There's been changes on the fire service board, changes within the commission, so we update and keep it updated, and that's what the, what this South Dakota Wildland Fire asked us to do, and we're changing it again this year because there are changes in, within yourselves and within our fire service board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution authorizing those designated persons' request. Range fire suppression assistance from the South Dakota State Wildland Fire Coordinator and Wildland Fire Division.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerome. Next up brings us up to item 13, and these are items from the Highway Department, now I recognize Joe.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Penn State Highway Department. Item A in front of you here is a resolution to enact our spring load limits. With the unseasonably warm temperatures here the last couple weeks after our deep freeze there for January, the roads have started weeping, the water coming out of the cracks, the DOT MDSS, and I forget what the MDSS stands for anymore, but anyways, that indicates that we should put our load limits on, we're probably a little late even now putting them on, but the resolution has to come in front of you to enact those, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Whenever you put the notification out for these roads, I mean, is it, do you just call the ones who normally are on it, or you just put a posting sign out there and you let them know it's because of the frost? I mean, just kind of, how does it get put out that there's load limits?
We put out a, you know, our foreman and their prospective divisions try and reach out to the people that they know, or, you know, your district and Ron's district, we had a call from Baker Timber yesterday, you know, they have a chipper up on Mystic trying to do some chipping for the Dakota Panel. So they, our foreman doing a pretty good job of trying to reach those people via telephone. We do also put it on Facebook, sheriff generally shares that. Then we also put out a public service announcement through the commission, so it gets out to all the people, the necessary people every year, so most of the time, they're aware that they're coming. Statute indicates that you can't put them on any earlier than February 15th without this resolution, so.
Chair.
You done, Travis?
I'm good.
Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve, or move to approve, resolution 2024-02-06-1 to oppose seasonal load limits effective February 6, 2024 due to climate, climatic conditions.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Item B is authorization to advertise and let 2024 annual construction projects, so we've got about half a dozen of them here. First one is an asphalt overlay on Nemo Road, about 2.7 miles, so we did a safety project on the very end of Nemo Road, the end of our jurisdiction, so we'll match up with that and come back to the bridge just past Norris Peak Road is where that location is. Asphalt surface crack seal, approximately 42 miles, or the estimated cost for that one is about a half million dollars. Step back to the overlay, estimated cost hopefully is around that half million to $600,000. We'll see where that one comes in. Asphalt surface treatment or chip seals, we're doing about 30 miles again, estimated cost of that is 1.3 million. The billing and reclaiming of Rochford Road due to the SDN Fiber Connect or Connect America, the SDN put fiber up Rochford Road this last summer, they have wrapped that up, so we will go to bid to re-stabilize that. All the bills, we've talked to SDN and we'll go directly to them, but we're going through the process, so we manage the contract for that. And then new this year will be pavement marking a majority of our asphalt roads, so the state, our state association of highway superintendents voted this last year at our fall meeting to discontinue the striping program as we know it, it's been an ongoing program for many years. The last couple, two or three years, it's been a stafu with how, when the contract gets let, when it gets done, some of our roads got painted twice in 2023. It's, so the association felt it was necessary or would be beneficial to allow each of the counties to administer their own pavement marking contracts, so that's what we're moving forward with. This year, it'll only be us, we've talked with Mead County and Lawrence County. Going forward in the future, they will jump onto our contract and will administer that contract going forward, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Joe? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let 2024 annual construction project.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.[1763.86]
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item C, Joe?
Item C, authorized, authorization to advertise and let our twenty, twenty-four annual supplies and materials. So supplies and materials, our gravel, you know, that we get from Pete Lean, concrete products from, I believe it's Rinker now, it's changed hands like four times. Those types of materials are wood deck, bridge materials. Those are just to name a few of the items that we advertise and let for. So.
Is there any questions for Joe? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Move to authorize the highway department to advertise and let twenty, twenty-four annual supplies and materials. Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item D.
Item D is a professional service agreement with KLJ to do a replacement design engineering on two bridges, one on Trask Road and one on one hundred and fifty-ninth Road. So Trask is in Wall, one hundred and fifty-ninth is just west of New Underwood. The costs for, in this agreement are for the hydraulics and the structural design. Typically, we kind of do those independently, but this year we're going to do both of those so they can do the abutment design. We're actually going to try something a little different with these two bridges. They're old wood structures that are on a relatively low daily traffic count. So we're going to look at putting True North Steel Bridge or modular type construction similar to that that we did on one sixty-fourth back in twenty nineteen after that bridge collapsed. So we're looking at a little different options to try and save the county some dollars on some of these lower ADT roads. Hopefully, we can replace both of those structures for what it would cost to put the program or put those bridges through the big program. We're also talking around the idea of applying for a big grant through the state for that, just unsure if the state will be accepting of that. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to approve professional services agreement number twenty-three, oh, three, dash, oh, oh, one, seven, five with KLJ Engineering LLC for design engineering for bridge fifty-two, dash, eight, three, seven, dash, two, twenty, and fifty-two, dash, five, ninety, dash, two, ninety-one, and a not to exceed fee of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next up brings us up to item fourteen, items from building committee. And looks like I'm going to recognize Kevin Burton.
Morning commissioners. First item before you is our second meeting for request for AVI systems design for our nine hundred concourse building to design the audiovisual implements that we're going to be putting in out there, which include the mics and speakers that we're speaking in now. So look for authorization to award that contract to AVI for thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Sir, you're here.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Kevin, could you explain or kind of give us the scope of that project, of what they would, what the project would entail and the different areas of the building that they're going to be working on?
So their main focus will be on the chambers and the audiovisual system in the chambers. But they'll also be doing wayfinding, electronic wayfinding for the building and be able to do announcements and notifications on the main lobby. They're also tying in the shared conference room so that commission meetings can be streamed in other locations. Or if there's another mandatory meeting that needs to happen while a commission meeting is in place, that conference room will also be able to stream or have connectivity through the building.
So it was my impression that on the building committee that this particular outfit, we've used them before and they do, they're reliable and they do good work and normally on schedule.
Yeah, AVI has done tremendous work for us. They're the ones that do all the audiovisual stuff in this building currently. So they, they are in charge of this system and they've kept it up and have always found good means for us to be able to keep it operating well and addressing our new concerns, moving it forward.
Chair.
You done, Ron?
One more question. So then if we go this route, then how often would they, relative to the building committee, would they do a presentation so that we have an idea of some of their concepts?
We can most likely do it after a design development phase. This is, this contract is only for the design of the system. It's not for installation or equipment. So it's just how to make the system work correctly and specing components and that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Ms. Haggard.
Chairman, when we're doing building committee stuff, I think it's not, shouldn't be just presented to them. If we're doing something different, it can be presented out here. That way we're all on the same page on some of this. To me, it just makes it better. So we're having an understanding because I like pictures and I like designs and stuff and to know some of that stuff. I suppose we could have another meeting and meet with you separately, but it seems just more irrelevant to do it in the back. And then I think we should do a lot of the stuff up front again. So not that you're hiding anything because you're not, but sometimes we forget that other people want to know about that stuff as well. So not just myself. I agree with this. I mean, the concourse is going to be a lot of work. Kevin already has been for you. Thank you for your, what you're doing. And you've done a lot of changes and you've done a lot of work to this. When you do the design of the commission room and how everybody sits and what's happening with the microphones and all that, when do we have the input on that?
Well, we've already had two tours.
Yeah, but you didn't really sit us down and tell us what was actually, is there ten people up front? Is there five with three on the side? Is there going to be mics that you can push and different stuff that have changed?
I think I can answer that.
Okay.
I believe that next commission meeting, we have TSP scheduled to come in and actually do a visual presentation of the dais and how it's going to look in the chambers and all of that. So that should help answer those questions.
Perfect.
As to how it looks. We're also doing some outside visualization and stuff for the nine hundred concourse building, but that's different than what we're asking for here.
And I appreciate that. I just thought it was part of it and it's nice to know ahead of time. I mean, we went there, but it didn't really explain exactly how we're setting it up. And at that point, I didn't know if we had any input as commissioners of how we want the dais to lay out or what we want on the dais because we always have before. We tried to get like the push button ones and some different things just to make it efficient and effective on some of our stuff. So it'd be nice to have some input on some of that, but appreciate it. Thought AVI was part of that.
Yeah, our design is not anywhere near complete. Once we do that presentation, if you guys have input, we're more than happy to listen and do that. I think you'll be impressed with what we've come up with for that dais design. I think we've listened in the past. If I may request one thing of you, Ms. Haggard, you requested that we be more transparent instead of going to the building committee with a proposal like this. All I have is a proposal. So I sent that proposal in as part of this memo. So everybody is aware and it is part of the board packet that it's very transparent on what AVI is providing for us in their proposal and what I'm asking for in this. So I'm not sure how I could have presented something different when I'm just receiving a proposal and then asking permission to move forward on that proposal.
Not you personally, but when we are talking about AVI and then you want to have the design and different things where they can present it to the building committee, as Ross Connect had said, it's easier to present to all of us. And that's what I meant by that. It's when you're doing a presentation, of course, it's transparent that you're bringing this forward and what it is and what it's supposed to be. But some of this, like I just said, you're going to bring the dais stuff forward, you're going to show us that. That's what I mean by transparent. I don't mean that you're doing things behind closed doors. I'm saying if we could bring some of that out that you guys are doing in there because a lot of times we have, I have ten meetings during the week. I don't have time to call you or meet with you every time you have something. Sometimes it's nice for us to have it out front. So it's not transparent like, okay, you're doing some really bad things. It's transparent so the public understands it as much as I do. And then I don't have time always to read every, and even when I read it, I'm not understanding the AVI and go, Kevin, can you, and I can't understand it on the phone. So my bottom line is, when you have the pictures and I tell planning this, the same thing, not just you and other people. If you have pictures or even the public today, some guy had a vacation home and show me some pictures, show me what that looks like. That's what that's about. So we can have a better understanding because I can't, I'm better at picturing, looking, and then understanding. So not just you, just how I work for me. And I don't know if the other commissioners have the same concerns on that. It's not hiding, it's just easier to understand. How about that?
And let me respond just a second because we did, I think it was about last year, we started the building committee meeting minutes having done up and put in the commissioner's box. So that gives you a good idea of what's being discussed and what's happening. And I, thanks Kevin for bringing up that KTM is going to come out and give a presentation of what's going to happen because you're right. But it, it's a work in progress. When you get that many people into a room, changes get done and they don't want to present something before they get more something to present. So I'm not, you know, if I remember right, there's been quite a few changes for like the treasurer's office and some other ones that had happened. So it's good that you're going to, you've got them lined up to give us a visual of what, how things are going to look. Because I think Ms. Haggard's got a point. We'd like to see it and it's moving forward. And so I think I just wanted to make that note that we do have the minutes that are out every month. So if a person has a question, they can go off that list and call, make phone calls. But we do understand it takes time to get to where KTM can give us something to present. And we can always make changes afterwards.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
You know, hearing all this, and I think I might kind of understand, you know what, the first meeting that I was there at, when we were talking about the ceiling being that plankboard or whatever it was, I don't remember how we said, is that even really an appropriate cause for what we're doing? Sometimes some of those things should probably come out in public that, hey, you know, the proposal was this, or, and maybe I'm saying the wrong term, but we said no because we didn't feel like we needed to add that extra elegance look and the cost to it. We want to go more of a simple, basic. And that's kind of what we've talked about because those are some highlight points that I think the public needs to hear that we're saving money, but we're also making it functional and to do what we need to do up here. Does that make sense? That might be what she's getting at.
No, and I, I understand. I don't have any pictures, you know, all I have is proposal at this point. So for this particular item, it's hard for me to have AVI come in and present anything when we haven't started down this design path. But once we get design done, I'm more close to being done, then we can come in and present. I've got no problem with that whatsoever. My question to you, Commissioner Lassiter, would be how often should we be coming here for all of those decisions? Because they are sometimes multiple during a week that we are, our job as project managers is to control the county dollar and help drive the design process forward. So if every one of those decisions that we're making have to come before this body, we're going to be here every meeting for hours. So just if we can recap or, you know, bring in as a TSP meeting and show some options of what we've done and then just give an overview that, you know, this is what we've come up with that is the most cost-effective design method. And this is what we'd like to, you know, have you guys make a decision on.
Right. I guess my, my statement wasn't to say come in here a whole bunch of times to give us updates, but when you do come and give an overview update that we walk through so the public knows that, you know, the final look, you know, it might look extravagant to some people. They don't know that we were in the back saying, no, we don't want this, we don't want that because the proposal was all this other stuff. And we can just get the highlights of, you know, we, we didn't go with a lot of that stuff because we wanted to make sure that was economical and cost-effective for the taxpayer. I guess that's what I was getting at. I wasn't saying come in here all the time and give us those because that's what we're on the committee for, to kind of work through that. But when you come and give a presentation, you know, kind of give them some of the background, a little bit of, hey, the reason why you came to this is because there was a lot of proposals and some of them were going to be very costly, but we whittled it down to this because this is the functional and the cost-effective recommendation. Does that make sense? We, Ron and I will know because we're sitting in there, but you know, sometimes the public needs to hear that as well.
I'm going to reel this in a little bit. We need to get back to the AVI.
Yep. Just so I, I want to recap to make sure I understand is that during a presentation, we can bring up the highlights of where money cost savings had been brought up?
Yep.
That's my understanding. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the design service contract with AVI Systems Inc. in the amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and to authorize Kevin Burton, construction project manager, signing authority.
Motion's been made. Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B.
Okay. Second item on our agenda is for the First Interstate Bank that we've acquired to ask for additional discretionary spending. The first three hundred thousand that we had asked for and were approved for was itemized in the memo. It had basically already been spent. And so now we're looking at that second phase of spending and most of that will be for additional systems and upgrades on the, on the building, trying to move forward on the remodel for the public defender side.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
So Kevin, are we going to be doing some of that work in-house too, on stuff that we can do and we got the time to do it?
Yeah, we've been doing a lot in-house as much as we can. The west half of the building is pretty extensive and we will address some of that as we can. But we're also falling behind in some of our maintenance issues and maintenance is the primary goal of buildings and grounds. So we can't ever let that slip. Just like if you don't maintain your car, it's going to end up with trouble. So we've got to maintain all of our buildings and make sure that they're, they're good before we do other things. And so we're trying to take advantage of our very talented buildings and grounds team to do as much as we can. But once again, we, we have to focus on maintenance with them. So some of the larger items that are over on that side, we'll probably end up stopping help.
Well, that's why I said if time permits.
Yep.
Realizing you guys have a busy schedule.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggard.
So this is your second spending authority of three hundred?
Correct.
And you have the amount that was budgeted is one point six five for this building?
Yes, one point six two five.
So when you build it at three hundred and three hundred, do you have to use any kind of state law on that? Or is it, is it, doesn't have to use the bidding process because they?
We will have to go through the bidding process if anything's over fifty thousand. We are requesting multiple quotes for anything that is fifty thousand or less for that. Essentially, we are acting as the general contractor. So we're not just soliciting a blanket bid for three hundred thousand. I'm asking for a bid for fencing to secure the BNG vehicles behind a fence. I'm asking for painting to happen. I'm asking for flooring to happen. I'm asking for demo of walls and carpeting to happen and some framing and storefront glass and all of these different implements and items. So I have multiple bid packages that I've been building and working on, complete with drawings and scopes of work for that bidding process. And then anything over fifty thousand is going to be publicly bid. So once I have all those bid packages together, we will advertise for those elements and have everybody come in and be able to give us proposals.
And I thank you too for, again, the cost savings that we just talked about on the others. That's huge to the taxpayers. You guys did that with something you're remodeling on your first set, right? Then it's another three hundred thousand for the next set. I don't know how much this is going to cost in the end, but again, it's nice, once you get some of the work done for us, whether we voted on it or not, to be able to see what you're doing. So it's not, it's for us to go out in the public and say, okay, this is what we're doing. Or if they ask you, it's not to be like transparent, you're hiding in the back. It's transparent. So when we're doing projects, guys, it's nice to tell Joe, John, and Steve, man, you should see that building. They're going to do this, this, and this. So when we do it in the back or you even put an AVI, I thought AVI was part of this. That's why, that's why we talked about it on the dais. So that's, that's what I'm trying to say, Kevin. I always don't have time to call everybody and most of the time, you know, I do, I try to call you ahead of time. So that's why, for me to understand it, maybe it's a girl thing, I don't know. I like to see stuff. I like to see it going forward. You took me on top of a roof. Nobody went on top of the roof. I wanted to see the flat roof and how we were doing the roof. So those pieces and parts make a difference for me. I think it's pretty cool to say, man, you should have seen this roof before or you should have seen this, this room before. So it's, it's a good thing, Kevin. It's not trying to be, like I said, people take it the wrong way, like you're trying to say you did something wrong. No, transparent means that everybody's on the same page and when theirs is not maybe seeing different things and other of us, we like it a little bit different. And then we tell the public or we tell, like Ron walks around and he'll say, he says, yeah, you see that building? It's amazing. So, and we can say what we're doing. Otherwise, you could read it off a piece of paper from, from. Otherwise you could read it off a piece of paper from, from whether it be in, uh, buildings or grounds or not. So you can ask the other departments, I do the same thing to them, um, not just built into ground.
And my, my intent is that after, if, if I'm awarded this three hundred thousand, then that basically covers the stuff that we can do immediately. The other stuff that needs bid out and that we need to receive costs on would probably be the last time we come forward with discretionary spending. And then I'd have that all spelled out. At that time, I'd be happy to show a, a video presentation of, of a slideshow of basically where we were and what we're looking at doing. Um, so that we can, um, show that visually.
So is there, um, when we did the bank stuff, just a question, do they, how did they do the taxing of that building? Since part of it's not government, does anybody know that?
Uh, I think Shannon answered that they still have to pay taxes on a partial.
Do they?
So the Verizon lease has to pay taxes for the square footage that they have and the bank has to pay taxes on the square footage that they have.
And someone asked me that the other day and I couldn't remember. To be, um, fair to you guys, I didn't remember. So, um, and again, on this building, I thank you for everything you've done, but I haven't agreed, uh, to do, uh, move forward on this building. I think it's something that we could have waited till later. So again, Kevin, I appreciate you and, uh, your team and what you do. It's just that on this building, um, again, um, I didn't think it was needed at this point for, uh, funding. I think, um, for us, we have wage study and different things that this building could have been put off till later. So, um, but I do appreciate what you do personally.
I appreciate that sentiment, but I'll also let you know that. Buildings and grounds crew is extremely excited about having a new space. And this building was less expensive than we could ever design or build something for ourselves. And so now we're ending up having to house two departments in an area that would have cost the same for one department. And just the excitement in our crew and seeing the, the value that they are feeling from being able to have a space is huge. It's, it's really, um, I've seen just a lot of camaraderie and working together to make this happen. And, and they feel special for having, having been thought of and having a space.
And Kevin, if I have a follow-up. Kevin, so I appreciate that, because I did talk to Dave, but I'm going to say, I don't know and I don't agree with you on that would have saved money or what it would have done from there. Um, it's proven that those buildings across the street that we could have sold and some other, uh, areas that we have discussed when I was on the building committee for buildings and grounds. So, um, I'm excited that they're excited. That's cool, because we do need to build into grounds, but I'm not going to say that we couldn't have done it cheaper or for less money with some of the areas that we could have sold, uh, across the street and others to be able to build even, um, over here. So, um, in that case, I'm in disagreement with that, Kevin, but I'm in agreement with, um, I'm glad your team is excited to be in a buildings, grounds building. But, um, for cost savings, I'm not going to just, I'm not going to agree with that, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Drews.
I've moved to authorize Buildings and Grounds Director Davis for sale. Spending authority of three hundred thousand for phase two from capital project funds for the initial renovation of the newly acquired property located at fourteen Saint Joseph Street. With the understanding that all procurement will follow South Dakota procurement rules and a summary of all expenditures will be made public.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I did have a question I wanted to ask during all that, but that's okay. Uh, my question, Kevin, is, uh, you budgeted one point six million. Uh, this will be the third, uh, second request for three hundred thousand, so that puts us at six hundred thousand. Phase three, are you expecting it to be right around a million or is there going to be two more phases?
My goal is to keep it around a million. I'd like to, um, you know, try to save at least six hundred thousand on this project, um, without bidding it to understand where the market is and, and all of that. It's really hard for me to determine an exact budget. Um, at this point, we have pretty good understanding of where we are through phase two and the six hundred thousand and where that's going to get us. The availability of contractors and where the market is laying today is a little difficult to project. There's some, there's some areas in the subcontractor realm where prices seem to normalize a little bit or availability seems to be more, um, adequate, um, and which tends to level out pricing some. But then there's still, um, some projects that I've seen coming through that were way more than what I'd be willing to spend. So, um, we'll, we'll have to bid it and see where we are. But I really don't anticipate it being, you know, in the neighborhood of the one point six. At the most, I'm seeing it like one point two.
For phase three?
For the completion of the project.
Okay, for the completion. Okay.
My, my, I'm, I'm going to make one comment.
If I could follow up, a- and I don't anticipate a, a phase four. When we get to phase three, I'd like to bid the rest of the project and then just be done with, with all of the procurement.
I'm going to make one comment is, you know, Kevin, I think, I think this was a good process, because the three hundred thousand dollars was, for, two times was number one, get as much done as you can, the smaller ones, as you said, getting it in there. And then you're coming back to the commissions, telling them what, what you got done. And I realize the bigger projects you're going to have to and you're going to come back to the commission on that. So really doing the project management in that route, you're keeping track of, you're getting all the small stuff on the way prepared for the bigger stuff. And I, I think that's a good process that we're following with this, because we're getting this feedback on what we're getting for the three hundred. So, Mr. Roskin.
Uh, Kevin, this doesn't really have anything to do with boards and paint, but it's the two lease agreements. And we were going to check to see if we've been receiving the payment from First Interstate Bank. And, and, uh, I'm not sure what's going on with Verizon. I think that lease is just going to carry over.
We've been receiving the payments from First Interstate Bank. Um, the Verizon lease was still going to First Interstate. I've been in contact with First Interstate with the realtor and have tried reaching out to Verizon numerous times. Our point of contact was nil. First Interstate is trying to reach out to Verizon as well, because it was their transfer of lease. So, um, we are in the works of getting that to happen. First Interstate has been, uh, has our address of any check that they receive from Verizon will be forwarded or deposited. And then they'll send a new check to us for that amount. So we're still going to receive the rent payments. The, the coordination of getting those to actually come directly to us has been, um, a little difficult dealing with a national firm like Verizon. They're not very responsive to our little demands for their lease.
Uh, the reason I brought that up is just another situation that, uh, people don't realize it's out there. And you're, in being buildings and ground, you gotta deal with it. So I appreciate, uh, all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor for approvals. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kevin.
No, I said no, I'm sorry.
What did you say, no?
I'm no.
Uh.
I just was reading my paper, sorry.
Motion carries with one no.
I think Travis.
Got to be here.
I had to go to the bathroom, I take the vote while I was here. It's always on the record. That's funny, but it's not that funny.
Mr. Lassiter, are you an aye vote or no vote on?
On the, um, three hundred thousand?
Yes.
I'll be an aye.
Okay, motion carries four to one.
There you go. Thank you.
Item number fifteen, uh, recognize Commissioner Manager Holly Hennies annual employee salary listing.
Yes, commissioners, these next two items were at the request of this board at the last meeting. Um, the first one is the annual salary listing per SDCL six dash one dash ten. Um, I've copied the statute for you in your memo. Um, wanted to just explain to the board what the current county process is and that the board gives direction on how they want the employee wages prepared each year during the start of the annual budget process. Um, they're talked about all through budget hearings, all the way June through September. Um, once the board approves the annual budget subsequently, um, that is when the wage rates are set as well. That is staff's directive to then go make the adjustments in our accounting system, Springbrook. And each one of those, um, eight hundred plus employees' records have to be manually adjusted for whatever wage, um, adjustments the board approves. That is then what generates the annual salary listing that's required by the statute. Um, the statute does not require board action, which is why it has not been placed as an agenda item. We want to be efficient and effective with the board's time, um, so therefore it just gets placed in the minutes for publication. That statute requires three different pieces when it comes to, um, salaries. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood how we comply with those pieces. Um, the first one is just a snippet of the minutes where it shows the annual salary listing. The second one is the requirement for anyone, any employee who's been added or anybody's salary that has been increased, which is the personnel section that you see in the minutes. And then, uh, the third requirement is the monthly payroll report. And that is the last section that you will see in, in meeting minutes. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions. If the board would like a change in the process, we can certainly, um, discuss that. Cindy Muller, our auditor, is also here. If you have any questions or concerns that she can address as well.
Holly, is there any questions for Holly?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
So Holly, when I was looking, and that's why I brought it up, like in a lot of the counties, they just have it on the consent agenda. So it makes it efficient and effective for not only us, but when the public is looking for salaries, instead of calling us or filling, filling out a foyer request, when it's on the agenda, they can find it. And I'll, I'll be truthful, I did not know they were in the minutes. My fault, I've been here a long time and I asked other people and they didn't see it, they didn't, other commissioners haven't seen it. So not your fault, because it's the rule, but it just makes it, when even if we had it on the agenda as a consent item, I don't think it's going to be, um, something hard to do. That way, if people want to know, you just say, well, first meeting in, uh, January, look on the agenda. Um, we noticed that from one of the people that came up here and he asked me, and then he's the one that found it in the minutes. So, um, called me and said, it's in your minutes, can you put it on the consent? I looked and then I trust but verified him. And they do it in Lincoln County, Minnehaha and different areas, they just put it on consent. Some of them actually don't put it on consent and, and then make a motion, but I think it simplifies it just by putting on consent. And if any, uh, person in the public wants to talk about any of the salaries, they can just pull it off consent agenda, just like we would. So I think it's pretty easy to suffice for the public.
So your recommendations, Holly, would it, to do what she, Ms. Hancock's talking would be to, uh, put it on the agenda on the twenty-eighth or in December?
Yes, the only adjustment that I would request of that is that we do it as the first regular meeting in December, which would allow the auditor's office enough time to go in manually, still adjust those employees to be able to hit the requirement of the first meeting in January.
So it'd be on the December, in January or just December, Ms. Holly?
It would be just the December first consent agenda. And then the, the annual salary listing would still be on the minutes for the first meeting of January, which is required by statute.
Either way is good for me, just so I think it'd be on the consent and I think it'd be good for the public to be able to find it. Or you not, like I said, tell them to go fill out a foyer or something, when they could just, Joan or even Geraldine could say just, it's on December first meeting in January, so.
Is there any other questions from board members? Sounds like the direction that they're looking for is to move direct staff to place its agenda item on the first meeting in December of each year to confirm the following year's wage adjustments and then place acknowledgement of the publication of the required annual salary listings, SDCL six one ten, on the consent agenda at the first meeting of each year.
That would be my motion.
Seconded. Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Hancock. I thought that was my motion.
Oh, seconded in yours. I thought you were just reading it up.
No, I'm, I'm fine, I'm just saying, I didn't have a motion on the floors. So we got a motion by Lassiter and seconded by Hancock. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next brings this up to B, which is the method of compensation of county commissioners.
Correct. The next item, I want to go through the statutes with you. Um, SDCL seven dash seven dash three is the compensation of county commissioners. And statute reads the method of payment, whether per diem or salary. And the method or, and the amount of per diem or salary shall be determined by the board of commissioners in each county. Then seven dash seven dash five lays out the requirements of the salary based on county population if the board chooses to use the salary, um, method. Per diem does get confused between the public sector and, um, state statute. Per diem means by day. So the commission could choose to set their compensation as an amount by day for the actual time spent by a commissioner doing commission-related business. So what I did was just go and make a random fake example for the board to be able to see a calendar. Um, if you as a commissioner worked twenty-one days out of the month and the board set your per diem each day as a hundred dollars, it would be you twenty-one hundred dollars. Or using the salary method, the board can set an annual salary amount. Because we all know that you guys work probably every day of the month between a phone call from a citizen, a phone call from a staff member, um, meetings, uh, emails, a lot of hours.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
So in my understanding, what you're saying, it's our compensation is set either by a per diem, which would be an amount allotted per day when we're just doing work, which would mean, um, if you didn't do work for the county for a couple of days, you wouldn't get paid for those couple of days versus a salary, which is the route that we've taken, and you just have a salary.
That is correct, sir.
So the per diem is not in the, in the essence of understanding how oftentimes per diem is used for the amount you get for travel outside of mileage?
Two completely different things, sir. Mileage is a completely separate statute in South Dakota qualified law, and that is seven, seven, four. And it says county commissioners shall be paid traveling expenses for each maltraveled and the discharge of their duties.
Right, no, I got that. I guess per diem, in, in my understanding is, um, I did get mileage, but when I traveled and worked for the government, my per diem was set at a rate per day. In other words, I got seventy-five dollars per day for hotel and twenty-two, thirty-seven for meals. That's how I look at per diem. Is that not anywhere near for whenever commissioners go somewhere? So when we go to pier, Gary and I, um, you know, you're allotted X amount of dollars per day for hotel. You're allotted X amount of money per meals whenever you're traveling on the government's dime.
It does get confused between private sector and public sector. You do get per diem and it is set in administrative rules. Um, they use the term interchangeably. So there are rates established for reimbursement for hotel and meals and things like that. But when it comes to compensation of a commissioner, the statute very clearly says per diem or salary. So you can set a flat amount, which they use the term per diem, which means by the day.
By the day, so we're either, we're either getting.
Meals and travel and hotels is a completely separate discussion than what the compensate, what your monthly compensation is.
Because the compensation says either do it salary or per day that you actually work.
Correct.
I'm tracking.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
So Annette showed me hers paper and they fill out a paper every time they travel and stuff. She gets paid salary, but if they get per diem, when you guys like go to SDC CL or whatever, um, they just automatically fill that out. Is that how ours works? If we say salary on seven, seven dash three? Or is it seven, seven dash five with the salary with the, not the per diem, but we get per diem? Because once we get a salary like employees, we get the same thing, right? That's why I said, when I was, uh, brought this up the first time, are we taking per diem? What do you guys set in that per day or are we taking salary? That's what I thought seven, seven dash three was when we talked about the first time. And seven, seven dash five was a salary. And I thought, just like we set a salary for Carol, if Carol, if Carol gets a salary and we pay Carol her salary, if she goes travel somewhere, we automatically as a county, right? There's a certain amount that you get for, is set by state statute. When Carol travels, that she gets for mileage, well, mileage seven, seven dash four for us, but maybe not for, um, employees, then all that is set with her salary. Or as, um, Travis goes and he's an employee and he doesn't get salary, he gets per day, then we still have that policy for, for Travis if he goes for training on Saturday and Sunday or something. Do you see what I'm saying? So I didn't get if the per diem was that we had to pick it that day or the salary. That's why I said seven, seven dash five is you get the salary and then we're. That's why I said seven seven dash five is you get the salary and then we're treated like the employees here basically, except for seven seven dash four. If we had to vote on that to get mileage, I think it, I thought it automatically comes with that. But do we need to vote on those? And what's the difference, Holly?
Seven seven three.
Right.
Guides the commission whether you, for compensation, whether you want to choose per diem or salary. It's not both.
Okay.
If you choose to go the salary route, you reference seven seven five, which sets the salary amount at a minimum on population. That's how I understand these statutes. If the count, if the board wanted to do something different for your travel, for your mileage, or I'm sorry, your meals.
Right.
The board could do that under county policy, which we do have a a policy already established that we follow the state rates for reimbursement for meals. Commissioner LaCroy several years ago put out a challenge to the other commissioners not to claim meals when you go to conferences or meetings or things like that. And so for a lot of years, nobody has submitted reimbursement for meals. Travel is completely different. It is based on statute and it says commissioners shall be paid for traveling expenses. There's, in my mind, when it says shall, there's no way fans are bought, there's no way around it. If the commissioner wants to not take travel reimbursement, there is a form that we've created that they can waive that.
Clarify, are you talking mileage?
Correct.
Okay, so the per diem I thought was seven seven dash three, set of per diem. Seven seven dash five was the salary because it also says if the board county commissioner fails to determine salary, we don't have to take it per county, it says if you do not determine a salary. So when I made the motion before, it was the salary we were getting, right, with the mileage? And then at that point, if we get travel, per policy, do we have to make a separate motion um if people travel? Holly?
No, statute directs us as staff to pay mileage.
Okay, so and saying mileage and per diem, if we do seven seven dash five was establishing a salary just like employee would? Or do we have to vote on it separately to to have travel?
That could be a board policy, but it is in statute that directs us to pay mileage.
Okay, so that's why I set seven seven dash five, no per diem with that. It sets it already for us, same with mileage, per state statute. And then um my issue with the travel is um I think at this point, board, um, we should be limited per person for travel because what's happening if we're not taking meals and stuff, we're spending six thousand, four thousand, nine thousand on per diems. Um, and I don't see any employees using that kind of per diem. So we're doing something different and we used to. Um, I'll be up straight, we used to do the travel where we limited, and then if someone, if I remember right, Holly, and we limited it to two people or um you got to go with Gary and then I got to go to the next conference, that kind of thing, instead of three people per time or um bottom line is, I think we get paid a good salary. I think that some of this travel is very important and I've always supported it. But I think what is happening is uh some of this stuff is getting out of hand when you get a salary and you're you're bumping those per diems up pretty high. Some of you have, of course, for mileage, that makes sense because you live further than the rest. But the travel's kind of got out of hand where um I don't think everybody needs to go to a conference and everybody has to uh be the same and treated as other employees. I don't think they send all their employees to a conference, they send a couple each time and then they bring back that reference. And Lloyd, you recall as well, uh, we did it at the city council, city council the same way. So um at this point, I don't know how we do that, but I think um when you're spending those kind of per diems, uh, something needs to change. Um, I honestly could say I don't take meals and travel. Um, I'll be straight up, I spend three hundred and twenty-three dollars, but I still believe in travel and I still believe that we should do it. I'm not discounting people that want to go, I'm discounting that we're we're spending way too much of taxpayer dollars on per diem when we could limit it to a certain amount. And then if that person doesn't want to go, if you, Travis has, doesn't want to go this year and Gary has to go twice, I'm not against that. It's the point that um it's getting pretty high on us and. So I'm for the salary, I'm for the mileage, I'm for your travel, but I think uh again, we should do like we did before and do something with the travel. So um it should be um in some kind of resolution or some kind of understanding that you don't get to go to every conference and what you get is maybe a per diem for travel per year each commissioner and when you spent that, you're done.
So that's my thoughts.
Well, thanks for your insight about me. What what's on our agenda is salary or uh per diem. And I think we kind of figured out, you know, every year beginning of the year, we chose the salary. The trial that just came up is a little bit different. I think about four years ago, we decided that with the commission, with the National uh County Commissioners, NACO, that we determined that one per year. And we'd switch it up to where some would go with the main, some would go with the WIR. And that was the direction that we went at that time and we put it in our budgets at that time. That's how it was one uh per year for commissioners. And that's like you just said, unless something happened, somebody wasn't going and needed to go. So that was kind of the direction when she, when Holly did her budget, that's why she does it as she does for that. So from my understanding from the conversation, I think you're okay with with the way things are, you just had some other questions.
I I would still do the seven seven dash five with the salary, with the mileage that you get, and then I would limit the travel. Um, because like I said, we're doing excessive amounts of per diem at this point, that that travel is causing us um those rates and those amounts to be pretty high. Like I said, if without, I'm not trying to be mean, but guys, you're spending four and six and nine thousand dollars on per diem when you get a salary of thirty-two, whatever, for doing your job. Some people don't think that's enough. I think that's part of learning is is travel, but there's got to be, like any job, um, based on budget. Sometimes our budget didn't even support it, so we jacked our budget up. Um, we could cut our budget some just without all that per diem and travel as well, so um just saying.
Mr. Chair, can I have Commissioner Hickok a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can you, can you clarify for me what you mean by the per diems are getting too high? In the last couple of years, we've paid almost next to nothing for per per diems because they don't request meals when they go. That that's the only per diem that that exists. You're correct in that there's salary. And then there's mileage.
Right.
So we have two commissioners, Commissioner Roskinick and Commissioner Lassiter, that both live, what, forty miles out of town? Give or take.
Ron Tripp, it's about sixty miles.
By statute, they are allowed to take that mileage. But we do pay them um anywhere from four to seven thousand, depending on a year on planning trips. Uh, I'm sorry, planning items, site visits, things like that. Um, and their travel attendance back and forth to meetings. But other than that, there's no other per diems that are being paid out to them.
So you're telling me Travis spent four thousand on mileage, Lloyd spent six thousand and Roskinick spent nine thousand on mileage? Now, what are they spending? So I can count everywhere I go in Pennington County and it's not part of my job, I'm going to count it as mileage. When I travel, none of that travel expenses, that's separate? So they have more money in there besides four, six and nine? That was just mileage that we were uh given? It wasn't, none of the travel was put in that for that four, six and nine thousand? I think Gary's was two.
And that is mileage that we pay in the relation to the duties that they were performing as a commissioner.
Okay, and where is the travel then? There's money above, above and beyond the two, four, uh, six and nine?
We do have a travel budget. Um, Commissioner Drews as the president of the State Association, he attends annual conference. Lloyd is the West River rep for the NACO board, he also attends and the State Association pays for that. Ron is on the state board also as the liaison, and so that is also part of their duties. So there are certain boards that they sit on that we don't pay for their travel. So it depends on the specific situation and the positions that they hold.
So I'm asking you, so everybody on there for the two, four, six and nine is just mileage? At this point, you did not put any travel on those yet?
I'm not understanding your question, ma'am.
Because you said it's not per diem, travel, mileage, expenses are what was sent out, right? It wasn't, that's per diem?
No, it is not, it is mileage. It is travel. I think, I think our words between travel and mileage are being interchanged and confused.
And your meals and all that stuff are not included in that two, four, six and nine thousand dollars?
That is our travel budget, that is not our mileage budget.
So how many budgets do you have? There's more than that on our mileage and our travel? So mileage and travel together, can we get that next time then? Because what I'm saying is if that's just one and not the other, how much more am I missing?
Well, I can absolutely break it out to show you which conferences, which commissioners have attended and which ones they haven't, what their travel is on the course of a normal year, that they're going back and forth to meetings and stuff like that. If that's the information that you're seeking to have broken out.
Mr. Chair.
I'm understanding to a certain extent, but I'm asking if travel and mileage is different and there's more on there, then it needs to be limited to a certain extent to what that amount should be. To me, if you let your employees do that, I don't think a department head would. I don't think if they saw unless it was something for, that they had to do, that they would say, okay, Joe, go ahead and travel. Or they say, Joe, you know, we have you at two thousand, we're going to budget. And that's how most employees, I do that with anybody I I have to give money to, is I pick and choose different people. And if they don't want to go and it's that important, then it's different. But again, you get, you already get a salary and then you get mileage. And do some of the mileage, are you coming into town, are you going to work after that? Are you charging that for that? I don't know. Um, what else are you doing? Because if I charge for mileage, again, um, you have that right, I guess. But I think for travel, some of it, um, if you're going down to Pier, do you need to stay for two weeks? Do you need to stay for three days? I remember Buscud went, he didn't go for three days, he went and then he also listened and then he went again. If you had to go and fight for something, you also can lobby, calling in. So some of those, those expenses even for that could be cut down. So you don't have to be at every meeting, you don't have to be at everything you do to charge the taxpayers that money when you could do it lobbying. We were told that a long time ago, you can make it through conference, you can call in in Pier to do some of this stuff. So my point is, I think we're getting um to the point where the travel and everything is getting, the taxpayers are being paid extra for stuff I don't believe that they should have to be paying for.
Okay, Ms. Lassiter.
Mr. Chair, hearing the conversation, um, I think I follow along. But I think the only way to um make sure that everyone's following along, I don't know how the audience is following along, but maybe, you know, I think I've seen a chart that Holly has made and I think that's what you were offering up to potentially put together a chart to show the different um travel versus um, you know, whether it was mileage for an individual versus going to a conference of someone. That way that you can better see the breakout, is that kind of what I was understanding that we are? I think that would be better than trying to talk about it because maybe.
I agree.
I know this happens all the time, sometimes you talk past something because you're not mentally seeing that picture. So if we're going to talk about that, I think we have to have that picture um rather than trying to talk about it because we can easily talk across each other and not realize that we're talking the same thing or different thing.
Yeah, so I'd recommend that that's what.
I'm going to move to continue till we have that information. That way we can talk intelligently about what we're, what we're doing, if it's mileage or travel or salary. At this point, I don't really know from the information we talked about.
First of all, Ron's next.
So.
What was the motion?
So uh.
Motion, yeah.
Holly?
I didn't recognize you, I need to recognize him because he's next in line.
So I guess an example would be last week I drove to Pier to testify on Senate Bill one sixty-seven, which was a twenty million dollar ask. And it would be very applicable to my district. So uh, I claimed mileage, but I stayed at a hotel, I paid that out of my pocket and I didn't charge for any meals. So if I didn't charge for meals and didn't, and I paid the hotel myself, I could have, I guess under per diem, I could have tried to get reimbursed on that, but I didn't, but I'm saying would that be per diem then?
You could have requested meals.
Right.
For your time when you were gone.
And I didn't, but I did travel because that would be percent the five dash oh one dash oh two oh one allowance for use of a private owned vehicle, which is a state statute.
You're traveling through the state though, not us. State organization, not us, Ron. That's why she's not saying that.
Well, and that would have to be something that the board would have to agree upon themselves if they're authorizing you to go out to testify when Gary is the legislative liaison and I believe Travis is the alternate, whether the, they would want or approve you to do that, to be able to take that travel or if you're just doing it on your own. That's going to have to be a board discussion on what the board feels appropriate for each member to be doing.
Sure.
Okay, you done, Ron?
Yeah.
So so Holly can break it out with mileage and travel on the expenses and then see if we can do something to make a difference on it. I think it's, needs to be continued so we can see the difference on both and then say, hey, it's not that big a deal. Uh, we missed the boat or I missed the boat. Or maybe we need to do something. Um, Ron just had an understanding of something that she didn't have an understanding of. So um if you run in and Holly said it straight up, if you're doing it through the state, don't charge the county for your um expenses. And if you're going to go, you have two liaisons that you could have uh posted or or trained up or asked beforehand instead of um making a travel expense.
So what's your motion?
Um, I don't know if I can make one, but I believe it should be continued till we get the information.
I'd second.
Moved by Hickok to continue to next meeting, seconded by Lassiter, any further discussion?
The chair.
Mr. Roskinick.
My only question is what questions do you need answered, Commissioner Hickok?
Well, Chairman, it sounds like um Ron needs some questions answered because Holly had to answer him through state uh what you can charge um to make sure you know ahead of time that you're not getting paid anything, you're just going for free because it's not on the the taxpayer dime, you said it. Um, that she lays out that if you're, you're doing these organizations, then charge them, that's who should be paying it, not the, not the um Pennington County. Number two, she's going to line out the mileage and the travel and the difference because I thought it was just, I thought it was both, that's why I called it per diem. So she's going to line out which one's per diem basically or travel and which one is mileage, am I correct, Holly? So we know the difference. And then we have the salary um that we'd have as well. And then we can actually vote on that intelligently on what we think or what we don't think.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
One question of Holly. Holly, did I understand you to say that none of us have collected per diem in the last couple of years or since?
For meals.
For meals?
For meals. Correct.
Or have any of us collected for hotels?
We do pay for hotels, yes, sir.
But not necessarily everyone has requested it.
Correct. And other associations also will pick up the cost if they're representing another board such as Gary and the association paying um for him to be in Pier.
Gotcha.
So we have a continuation motion on the floor to continue to bring back the breakout. I'm going to say mileage and travel.
She's going to, Chairman, if I could, she's going to put our salary, mileage and then travel. Like you said, and if there's no meals, Holly puts zero on meals. That way the taxpayer know that you guys are being good.
You confuse me with the salary.
Salary goes on it, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I think I'll just break out salary, benefits, travel, mileage, per diems, conference. Um, and if there's any resulting policies that the board wants to implement.
Probably should break out medical too, insurance.
I can, yeah, part of benefits, I can certainly do that as well. One that I personally feel that the board may want to consider is that if you don't go to a conference and there's a cost, that it should be reimbursed to the county. Something to consider that is a taxpayer expense as well. So we do everything we can to try and send somebody else or whatnot, but sometimes it happens.
Okay, so let's uh, any further discussion? Say none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Holly.
Next, we come up to approval of the vouchers.
Add on immediately.
Move to approve the vouchers, an amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-five thou, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
Move by, move by Laster, second by Ross Connect, any further discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen is twenty twenty-four legislative session, Mr. Drews.
Well, I've tried to keep the, um, commission informed as to activity that's going on at Pier. Happy to answer any questions. But I would like, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect to, uh, further expand on Senate Bill one thirty-four, which he did come to Pier and testify on, uh, last week. Uh, and I'm the one that made the request that he come, because he's been the one that's been working with the Forest Service, uh, relative to the, uh, healthy forests and the critical infrastructure relief. And so Commissioner Ross Connect, if you would just explain what that bill does and, uh, our involvement, maybe?
Uh, well, Senate Bill one thirty-four, right, Gary?
Yes.
Yeah, I said one sixty-seven, but that bill would, uh, there's, uh, twenty million dollars out there that would go to the Department of Agriculture. They would be the administrator of that, those funds. But what that would do is we know we lost a sawmill outside of Hill City a few years ago, two thousand and one. And the only operating sawmill that we have in the, in the Black Hills, uh, in South Dakota would be the Restmore Forest Products up in Spirit Fish. And it's my understanding that they're losing about a million dollars a month with the way things are right now and the available timber that they can harvest. So part of this bill would be relief to not necessarily that particular sawmill, but to any entity in the timber industry that, uh, is feeling some type of a hardship relative to the current economic conditions and the rules set forth by the federal government. So I look at this bill as a tool to keep that industry, uh, maybe even on a temporary basis. But when you sat there and testified, and I heard other testimony, there's some major economics out there. And what they voted on that particular day probably won't affect, you probably won't see any results one way or another for the next five or ten years. But without, uh, a sawmill being in, uh, in the area to help promote a healthy forest, it's just going to be a matter of time that we're going to see major beetle infested, infestation and forest fires. That's why when you go down the Custer, you know, they went through that, they can tell you firsthand what that's like, the damage that was done by those beetles, because that forest hadn't been maintained properly. And they, they celebrate by burning a beetle every year, so. Uh, and then, and then just the forest fires themselves. And I'd hate to see a forest that, uh, suffered beetle infestation and then gets succumb to a forest fire, that could be major. And the largest industry in the Black Hills, I think agriculture is number one in the state, but I think one of the largest in the Black Hills would be tourism. And we're, we're messing with tourism when we start, uh, looking at the health of the forest and not protecting it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I do think this is a very important bill for our area. This is a bill sponsored by, uh, Senator Dybert from Orange County, and, um, has all good intentions of helping really the, the counties through the Black Hills, um, that are dealing with, with forests. Uh, there's, you know, we're facing this week, uh, be the halfway point during legislative session. So a lot of the bills have only been heard on one side of the body or the other. And, uh, most of those will be transferring over, or some have been transferred over already to committee actions in the, in the other house. But, uh, there are a number of bills that have, uh, uh, county interest, uh, in those. And, uh, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggett.
So Gary, they have, basically, the, the bill is about healthy forests, or it's about saving sawmills?
It's a, it's a, it's a two-phased bill with, uh, being a healthy forest and a relief bill. Uh, trying to retain that timber industry until they can, uh, get the amount of timber that can be taken out of the Black Hills, uh, back up to where it satisfies what the timber industry really needs in order to, uh, operate.
Thank you, and I think they did appropriations before, remember, for the beetles and stuff, so this wouldn't be any different, if I'm correct. Remember when the beetles started taking over, and I'm almost positive they gave appropriations for that. So this wouldn't be any different of trying to basically help the sawmills plus the, I, I don't know if the, I don't think the beetles are as prevalent, but there's always something else out there that's coming next. So, um, to maintain the forest is huge, plus to even clean up some of the forest for healthy infrastructure. Hopefully that appropriates some of that, which I'm in for, because, yeah, Scott Guffey, that's what he does a lot. And, uh, it makes a huge difference if you drive along the sides of the road, let alone if they're going into different areas and taking out those slash piles and stuff, so I agree with this.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Gary, done?
Aye.
I was just going to kind of reiterate that, you know, several years ago, um, whenever the, um, the feds made a determination that they were going to reduce the amount of board fee, um, I don't remember if it was two million or two, twenty million reduction, you know, we were against that.
Yep.
And, uh, when we were against that, um, it still went through, and that's causing a lot of the problem, because now the forest is going to continue to overgrow, which is going to make it unhealthy, because, you know, we locally know how to better manage that than maybe the feds do, so absolutely, I'm on, on board with this.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Laster, and the, the whole commission here. I think we had a presentation from the Forest Board probably before your time that showed what Lee Deadwood looked like way at the beginning before we had forest management, and it was bare. And now look at out in that area how it is, and that comes from good forest management. Um, as I talked about in our previous meeting, with some of the federal laws that come out, you know, when they were talking about diameters and old growth, that some old growth was less, that you could put your hands around, but yet was protected, but that's preventing everything else from growing to what it needs to be. That's something the W I R, W I R Board is, is working with feds on, working on that. Uh, I do want to bring up that it's not just the sawmills that, uh, are,
Yep.
There's a lot that rides on those sawmills, Marilat is one, you've seen the, heard about the road limits, and Neiman, or someone's out there, uh, chipping up slash piles so that they're able to produce the chips that they need to run.
Yep.
They've done that for many, many years, when, when it gets scarce, they, they get their own chipers out there or hire someone out there and start chipping up slash piles, whatever they can get to get the material to do to build the, the shelving and cabinets that they do. So it's, it's a vital, uh, vital part of our community, the forest is. And it's not always been managed well, but I think they're really doing a good job. And we just got to keep our nose to the, the ground on these, uh, with the federals, you know? With that, I think there's an ask to, to approve a resolution supporting SB one thirty-four to make appropriations to create a healthy forest, critical infrastructure relief and grant program.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I am, I am hopeful that, uh, all the counties in the Black Hills will, uh, adopt some sort of similar resolution or this resolution, uh, to send a message from the Black Hills to the legislature uh, of the critical importance that this is, uh, to the entire Black Hills and to the state of South Dakota. It doesn't, doesn't stop at the edge of the, of the hills. I mean, the economics of it do extend all the way across. So, uh, I would ask for your consideration of the, in, of this resolution in support of Senate Bill one thirty-four.
Is there any further discussion? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr.?
Move to approve the resolution supporting SB one thirty-four, make an appropriation to create the healthy forest, critical infrastructure relief and grant program.
Second.
Move by Ross Connect, seconded by Laster, any further discussion? See none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we moved items from the public up to the beginning of the meeting, so I'd look for more. Mr. Ross.
Go, uh, ten-minute break, let planning and zoning get set up for the Board of Adjustment.
Move by Ross Connect.
Second.
Second by Laster, take ten-minute break, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll come back into session. At this time, we are going to go into the Board of Adjustments.
Move, second.
Move by Drew, second by Laster, to go into the Board of Adjustments. Is there any discussion? None, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. With that, I will recognize Cody.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Agenda item A is variance VA twenty-four dash zero one. It's to allow vacation home rental on a lot less than one acre. The applicant landowner is RFL Holdings LLC, Ryan Remington. I do believe he's in the audience, if there are any questions for him. Location of the property is six five one seven South Canyon Road. Access is off South Canyon Road, and there is a hundred-year flood plan on the property. Uh, we take a two, two-pronged approach when grant, when reviewing variances. But I remember all other granting of variance runs counter to public interest, those answers are on the screen. Uh, it does appear that it is not in the public interest. Uh, VHRs in the neighborhood, the other VHRs in the neighborhood meet the one-acre required lot size. That doesn't conform to the ordinance, as, uh, section three nineteen requires a one-acre lot size for VHR. And for prong number two, whether granting a special condition exists to grant the variance, uh, there is no special condition that exists on the subject property. Uh, the applicant's reasonable use of the property as a VHR is not allowed use by right in either a suburban residential or agriculture district. Uh, currently, there's a single-family residence on the property that was built in nineteen thirty-four and a detached twenty-four by twenty-four garage. And the city, uh, is in control of the septic, as they are within the city's one-mile septic jurisdiction. Uh, the county highway department said that an approach permit for the existing approach must be fine with the highway department. And county ordinance enforcement said there's a current violation for running an Airbnb or a vacation home rental uh, without a conditional use permit. Uh, if the variance is approved, this would allow the applicant to apply for a conditional use permit. Again, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow VHR on a lot size that's zero point seven eight. Uh, the applicant was notified on December sixth that he didn't have a conditional use permit to operate a VHR and was, um, in violation of the Pendleton County zoning ordinance. Again, section three nineteen requires a one-acre lot size, and again, the subject property is zero point seven eight acres. There are no physical conditions that would warrant approval of this variance. And again, denying this variance request does not deprive the landlord of any, any allowed use by rights in a suburban residential district or an agriculture district. Uh, so with that, staff would recommend to deny without prejudice VA twenty-four dash zero one, as there is no special conditions that exist on the property that would support a variance. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees, staff would have one condition be added.
Thank you, Cody. Ryan, would you like to speak on this? Just identify yourself for the record and?
Yes, thank you for, uh, the opportunity, Ryan Remington. Um, yeah, trying to apply for a variance for a VHR for that property on South Canyon Road. Um, new to this, is there, do you want me to just kind of explain my, my side of the story, or what?
Yes, if you could explain how you got to where this is and your, uh, application and so forth. Then if the commission has any questions, we'll give them time to ask you some questions.
Certainly, certainly. Um, you know, this, this property does not meet the, the one-acre requirement. Uh, there's a couple interesting pieces to the puzzle with this property. It's close at point seven, point eight acres. And, um, you know, if, if the purpose of the one acre is to ensure that there's, you know, a, a buffer between neighbors, that certainly is, is the case with this property. Um, I did, I, I'm not very tech savvy, so I, I didn't pre, pre, prepare a slide or anything, but I do have a couple pictures on my iPad here. If you got, if, if, if the commissioners would, would like to see those. Um, it backs right up to a hillside, and so there's really very little for neighbors even within view of the property, uh, so.
Thank you, Ryan.
And there's several pictures on this, you can slide?
Yes.
Okay.
Slide, yep. Um, from, from forty-four through fifty-one, there's, uh, there's pictures you can see. To the north of the property, you can't see any neighbors, all you see is the detached garage that was mentioned. To the south of the property, there is one neighbor that's within view, but it's on the far edge of the property. And we have put up a, a privacy fence on that side of the property to, to, to help with that between the one neighbor. Um, so, no, it, it does not meet the one acre, but i- it certainly is close. Um, and, and that was one of the, the main reasons to, to apply for the variance. I also know that the commission has, has been working through this process and, and, you know, not really aware of what that timeline might look like. Um, we did receive that notice in December and stopped taking bookings, um, right, right away. Uh, we, we haven't had this in operation very long, and, and new to this, it's my first VHR. Um, you know, I have young kids, and part of my thought is, uh, you know, this would be a, a good way to potentially ensure to have a house for them at some point in time down the road. Um, so, so I, I don't know if that addresses any of the initial questions, I'd be happy to, to answer any others, but that's kind of the, the thought with, with bringing this variance to, to the commission.
So Ryan, you live here?
Live here in Rapid City.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Is, what, commissioners have any questions?
Uh, I always look at the one acre, the intent of the one acre, and that was to not encroach on neighbors. And, you know, you can, you can have three acres, and if your lot, if your house is right adjacent to the property line, uh, well, then you don't meet that intent, so. Thank you for sharing that photo, that, that helps, uh, helping me try to make a decision here. But Ryan, do you have all the permits relative to the state and, and, uh, so that you're, relative to the state you're operating legally?
So we, um, when we got that notice right away, uh, we've applied to the state, the state has come out and inspected the property. We are in the process of, um, working through the requests like fire extinguisher, um, you know, the fire, fire alarms. Um, that, that, so that is in process. Um, their response back to us that is if we, and I think we've got those fire extinguishers and alarms in place as of like, you know, a week or two, within the last week. And so the state's response to us was, you know, they had a couple other window things that they wanted us to do. Um, but, but they said we, they would be fine with us operating initially if we can just get the, the alarms and the extinguishers in place.
You know, we're still navigating through the ordinance relative to the vacation home rentals. But, uh, my, and you can, you can up, uh, my question was, you know, we're already, we're, we were pretty strict on that one acre, but then the revised ordinance, it was less than an acre, and you could achieve that by doing a conditional use permit? So we're going to try to get rid of that one acre minimum?
Uh, that's correct. So at the planning session meeting last Wednesday, um, staff had brought up some criteria of actually just doing a licensing and registration type of, um, requirement for vacation home rentals, and currently, as is proposed, there is no restriction on the lot size.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, Ryan, um, I presume this property was originally part of that, the reserve of Remington Ranch?
No, no.
Was it?
I, I'm not familiar with Remington Ranch.
Okay. Dan? Mr.? Oh, I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Laster.
I just wanted to know if Cody was going to tell us a bit important information before I ask my question.
Oh, uh, no, so Cody Sack, Environmental Planner, the reserve at Remington Ranch is over by Three Forks. This is off South Canyon, right before you get to Nemo Road.
Okay.
Before it turns into Nemo. Um, closer to city limits.
Okay. Mr. Laster, follow up?
Gotcha. Um, Cody or staff, you know, there's a complaint about operating, um, in the neighborhood and they don't have a CUP. I understand that, that's what we're here dealing with that. Uh, what they wrote out, and this is anonymous, but was there any evidence given other than the statement there? In other words, you know, whenever people say that individuals are trespassing on their property, we've had this come before us many times, that, that's going to happen, and, and there's complaints about that. I guess I want to know, did they submit any evidence that? I guess I wanna know, did they submit any evidence that this has happened or is it just a complaint?
Uh, so, uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner, the only thing I received was the letter that's in the packet. Um, Dwayne, so our art enforcement officer, did mention anything in his comments that, and of, of any trespassing or anything like that. It was just all, um, someone complained that someone was operating a VHR. Uh, Dwayne looked and there wasn't a conditional use permit, so that's what the violation was for. I'm not aware of any complaints for trespassing or anything besides the letter that we received.
Yep. Follow up, Mister Chair. And, and this is more of a statement, you know, I know we're working through the, you know, the ordinance for VHRs. We've had a ton of conversation about it. Uh, I was in favor of the, um, the lot size being changed to be in smaller lots. And so, um, but right now, I just gotta hear some more on this one, but before I can say one way or the other, the only issue is you, you don't have any of the stuff to operate even from the state. You're working through that process, is that correct?
So, we sent them the pictures of, essentially they required us to have pictures of the fire alarms and extinguishers. And those pictures were sent, you know, this week, so we haven't heard back from them. But their letter to us was saying, once they had pictures of the alarms and extinguishers in place, that they would be fine with us operating as a VHR. Um, there are other, there, there is some requirements with windows that they, they put in, but they, they said, you know, given the fact with, uh, the difficulty in getting, you know, if we had to replace a window, of getting that in, that they, they would be fine momentarily of operating as a VHR with the understanding of addressing the windows as we could get them.
Do you have that letter?
I, I could certainly forward it, yes. I don't have it on me, but I, I do have the email.
Okay, I'd be interested in seeing that.
I can look it up.
Here.
Miss Haggard.
So water and sewer, um, you have enough, you're legal on your water and sewer that your sewer, basically your septic is good and that your water is well, or how do you get your water?
The water is a well and, um, you know, I don't know specific requirements from the sewer water's perspective. We have been renting it out since May and haven't had an issue to this point in time. I can certainly look further into that if, if necessary.
Main thing is that your septic has been checked?
Yes.
And then you have your water system, do you know anything about that, Cody, or are you just?
Uh, I can answer that. You gotta have a quarterly water test for the state.
Okay. For?
Bacteria or anything.
For septic, for county too, right?
No, that's for the state.
The, yeah.
Okay, that's why I thought you said city, I'm sorry.
No, state.
So, uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner, um, for the septic, I know Dwayne talked with Melissa over at the city, 'cause the, the house on the inside was remodeled, that we didn't know about bedrooms or anything, uh, how many bedrooms were there before or how many, if any were added. Um, this, the city came back and said that the septic system is operating, that it's not in violation of any city ordinances or anything like that or city codes. Um, so at this point, that we wouldn't have any issues with the septic system.
Thank you, 'cause most of the time if it's one, less than one acre, that's usually the issue I have for your water and sewer systems, because then you don't have enough room to even operate a septic. You might have to do a mound or something else. So for me, that's huge. And then, um, again, I think for me, um, it's business. So I like people doing business in our county and if they're operating without complaint, and, uh, I've seen your pictures, it's very nice. Um, and for the future, hopefully for VHRs, we won't have a limit of one acre. It'll just be those major issues like water, sewer and, you know, complaint based as well. 'Cause once they do a conditional use, if there is complaints, you have to comply with those from the county as well, Ryan, so you know that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mister Chair.
Mister Drews.
So, so Ryan, is the actual address sixty-five seventeen South Canyon Road?
It is. So it's right on, on South Canyon.
Okay. So I see in our packet, we do have a, uh, a, a letter from somebody that only describes themselves as an unhappy neighbor. Uh, do you have any contact with your neighbors that?
Have not. Um, no, and, and, and I was shocked to hear that was the case because it is such a private lot. Um, you know, we did put that privacy fence up right along the property line. And so, you know, maybe that was, maybe they didn't like that property fence, property, you know, the privacy fence. Um, beyond that, it's just such a secluded lot, you know, the, the reviews I get from, from people that are staying there, like, oh, we just love this place, you know, it's just quiet, see the deer walking through the yard, you know, all of those things. Um, there's nobody in the front of the, 'cause it's just South Canyon Road is the front of the, and there's nobody to the north. There's only one property where we put the privacy fence that really can even see the house.
Okay.
So Chair.
Miss Haggard.
Can I make a motion or not yet?
You, you're done, right? Do you have follow up?
I'm done.
I'm gonna move approval.
To oppose?
Um, because of just topography and some of the changes that we're gonna make in the future, hopefully with VHR, it'll be a positive. So, um, I would move approval.
Mister Chair, I'll second that, but can we add a condition?
Yes, sir.
Uh, that, that condition would be you obtain a lot, your licensing from the state. So, so there'd be two conditions. One would be the, you obtain a conditional use permit for vacation home rental through the county and, and operating permit through the state.
That's okay with the motion maker?
Yes.
Okay. Cody, did you get that? We have a motion on the floor to approve as long as a conditional use permit through the county is done and through the state, state's approval?
State license.
State license is approved.
Mister Chair.
Mister Lester.
Um, probably would be wise for us to get that email so we can make sure, or at least Cody needs to have that email to make sure that they're compliant.
Uh, yeah, so he, he found, he gave an email to me. Also, with the, um, first condition in there as well as a CUP, we require all of the licensing from the Department of Health at the CUP process too. Um, so it will get, it get done in order for, to apply for the CUP.
So that list he has will have to be completed.
Yeah, we have, we have a whole VHR checklist that he'll have to go through and have everything on there. And part of that is the, uh, Department of Health license, sales tax license, um, approval of septic from the city, Rapid City, all of, all of that, so.
We don't need two conditions, just the, just the one.
You can, you can add, the applicant added in there if they would like, um, if you want that extra safeguard, but it would get handled at the CUP process too.
So we do have a motion on the floor with approval with the two conditions. Is there any further discussion?
I think, you might wanna see if there's anybody in the audience.
That's, I was just gonna, is there anybody in the audience that would, has anything to speak on, on this matter? Excuse me?
She was there, so did I.
Oh, uh, that's what I was. Normally we ask if there's a speaker request form, but.
I don't have one.
Okay, so just identify yourself for the record. You might wanna bring that mic down so we can hear you.
Okay. Roxanna Barloon.
And we live up the road that's in the middle of the picture. And this is a back view of the house. It's a totally different view from the front. And for some reason, this has included our property, not just this.
Do you, I think what you got, you got a notice because.
We got a notice that they're, they're having this here. And for some reason, it sounds like it's including our property, which is up above.
No, it's, it's not, ma'am. This is just for his property. I, I understand, maybe Cody or somebody can talk to you after the meeting or explain to you, but the surrounding properties get a notice of what's happening with that property and that's what you got. And I have to admit, it's difficult. You read that and you're seeing numbers and it's confusing.
Okay, but your picture does not, he's got a, the fence over here on one side, where the property is. These pictures here where all the trees are are the backside of the house. If you take it from the highway, it looks totally different.
Okay. Are, so your opposition is, is you thought it was your property that was gonna get.
I was trying to figure out why we would be included in it.
Oh, yeah. You, you just get the notice when they're gonna do a change like that, so.
Okay.
But Cody can talk to you and explain to you what, what's actually happening.
Okay.
Thanks for taking your time to come to our meeting, though.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? So we do have a motion on the floor with approval with two conditions. Is there any further discussion? Say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mister Chair.
Mister Lester.
Move to adjourn as a board of adjustment and reconvene as the board of commission.
Second.
Moved by Lester, second by Drews to adjourn the board of adjustments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to the consent agenda.
Good morning, commissioners, Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item B is the hard rock mining research update. And item C is major planning and development overlay amendment review, PUR nineteen dash zero nine for Donna Hartshorn, to review an existing planning unit development overlay to allow for seasonal commercial recreation and amusement structures. And the Planning Commission recommends to continue PUR nineteen dash zero nine to the March fifth, twenty twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting.
Mister Chair.
Mister Drews.
I'd move to approve the planning and zoning consent agenda as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Is there anybody that want, in the audience, that want any of those items removed? Any commissioners? So we do have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to our regular agenda items. And the following planning and zoning matters, uh, in our uncontested hearings are those which Planning Department has not received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item has been reviewed by the commissioners and the decisions during these hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive any comments contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. These are the uncontested hearings, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item D is a road naming request. Um, the Planning Department received a road naming application to name an existing private access and utility easement, uh, Grub State Court. Uh, the applicant is Rockerville Gotalan LLC, and the existing road would provide access to sixteen units. Uh, this went through Planning Commission where they recommended approval on it. Uh, so with that, the Planning Department recommends approval of the proposed road name, Grub State Court, for the entire approximate four hundred and fifty feet of existing road.
Chairman.
Miss Haggard.
Move to approve the road naming of Grub State Court.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lester to approve the road rename. Any discussion? Say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. I to me.
Uh, item E is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash fourteen. Still in the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from low density residential district to commercial district. Uh, the applicant is Cody Heather Milhoff. The landowners, Galen and Linda Livermont. Location of the property is seven four three one Morris Lane. Uh, this was through Planning Commission, where Planning Commission recommended approval. So staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash fourteen.
Is there any questions for Cody on this? Say none?
Mister Chair.
Mister Lester.
Move to approve CA twenty-three dash fourteen.
Second.
Moved by Lester, second by Roskinet. Any further discussion? Say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Item F.
Item F is rezon RG twenty-three dash nineteen. It is to rezone seven point seven two acres from suburban residential district and agriculture district to commercial district. Uh, again, the applicant is Cody and Heather Milhoff. The landowners, uh, Galen and Linda Livermont. Uh, with the board approving the comprehensive plan amendment, uh, staff would recommend approval of the, of rezon RG twenty-three dash nineteen with the Planning Commission's concurrence.
Mister Chair.
Mister Lester.
Move to approve RG twenty-three dash nineteen.
Moved by Lester.
Second.
Seconded by Hagcock. Any discussion? Are you folks on this item? Okay, you're good. Any further discussion? Say none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Now we come to items from chair, commission members. This is a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items back before the board for consideration. Is there anything for that today?
Chairman.
Miss Haggard.
Just, uh, I think for the training for executive session would be huge for this team. Um, I think it eliminate in the future any issues with, uh, violations or otherwise. We're all on the understanding of open meeting, um, how they work, what's supposed to be on there. So, um, I'm just wondering if that's moving forward anytime soon.
I can say that there's been, uh, doing some drafts and I've communicated, I've, I've attended the, uh, department heads meeting and asked them, and they're waiting, they'd like to review some of that, the draft and say if yea or nay if they want any of that to.
Okay, for that, I think, um, just from what I've seen, um, that some people are bringing stuff forward and some aren't. And I'm not, um, I think it's better to be in the public if we can make it public. Um, and if we can't, we can't, but a lot of it's not promotion and stuff like that. It has to do with just basic information that the public, like, like I said before, we had someone come up here not knowing when you're talking about a DBM, public doesn't know that, public doesn't know a lot of that stuff. So that information is not being disseminated to the public, um, in way that they can have an understanding. That way, we, we'd have less questions. Um, just how it's presented out in the public, I think, could be different. It makes it easy on them, um, and has an understanding so we can have some discussion about, um, what we're doing for Pennington County. It eliminates looking like exceptions, it looks like at that point, um, we're doing it for the reasons that we're supposed to, um, and they can ask questions. So, anything we could do to make it, again, I'll keep using the transparent and it sounds like just a, a mean word, but it's not, it's not to be mean. It should be more transparent for the public. The public's business should be in public, so, um, anything that we could do and train not only us, but the, uh, staff, I think, uh, most people are very appreciative of that.
Yes, I think once we get that all drafted and approved, we can send a draft to the commissioners to review.
Absolutely, we're just waiting for the final review from the state's attorney's office.
Okay.
Yeah, it would help us to not have to file open meeting violations on people 'cause we're guessing, um, instead of knowing what is going on with open meetings. I think it'd eliminate that as well. So we all have that first, the understanding, because this, I think, could have been prevented again with communication on some of that. But because there was not, it ended up, uh, a couple of us filed, so.
Next, we go to twenty-one meetings and committee reports, and we'll start with Travis Lester.
All right, um, so building committee, we heard, um, from Kevin, pretty much some of the updates. I wasn't in the action meeting, uh, I was only in the planning meeting, which was the one beforehand, but, uh, I didn't see anything changed drastically. And I'll let Ron, Commissioner Roskinet, um, comment on any things that might have changed from that, from the first meeting on that one. And as far as complete health board, the complete health board, uh, they just recently brought on a new member to their board, and they're currently going through policies and procedures. They're always going through policies and procedures and updating. They, they kinda update a block of them at a time, so that's kinda what they're in the process of doing. But the other thing they're doing is they're getting ready for a big inspection, um, one of those certification type inspections where they're getting ready to have individuals come in and look at what they're doing and making sure they're doing things like they're supposed to be doing. So that, they're getting basically ready for that. I think that's actually going on here in a week or so. I think it's coming up real soon.
It is coming up real quick.
So, that's about all I have for that.
Mister Drews.
Um, I was not here for the Elevate, so I'm hoping that, uh, Chair LaCroix will be able to fill in.
Thank you, Gary. And I will. Um, Elevate, they pretty much went over their financials and they are talking about changing the board makeup. Uh, right now you have a board that has, gosh, I think thirty members. It's how it works. How it works and Deb, I think you would remember how it used to be down to, it was like.
Fifteen maybe if you're lucky.
Fifteen at the most, and so they are looking at going back to that. And so they presented on that to the whole board, but they say they're taking input and. By the end of the year, when the annual meeting is, is when they want to, uh, do that, and that was, uh. Alan Solano who presented on that and I can't remember the other person who presented on that, but they are looking at changing that. So, the other big thing that they talked about besides just, uh, reports was, um. Uh, the, the Amazon, uh, facility that was going to start up, so they gave a little bit of a present, presentation on that. On what kind of facility it's going to be, a lot of people thought we were going to get a big building like Sioux Falls, a big distribution center, but it, it's more of a hub. So, uh, they presented on that. And, uh, there were, was some other. Comments and discussion probably for the Elevate to want to, uh. Maybe start being a little more progressive as far as, I think in some, uh, location, this come from Darren Herr. On the board that maybe, uh, they talked about some of the needs of these buildings that are needed for the businesses. Uh, some areas, build the building and then hold on to it. And sell it because they've got the numbers of what the need is. But, uh, maybe getting into a public-private partnership with some businesses to possibly build the buildings. Because they're not always going to sell or get occupied right away, but businesses are looking for those, but. So that was some of the discussion and so they were, uh, I think they're going to do some research on that and bring that back. So that was most of that, uh. Discussion for, uh, Elevate. Uh, Black Hills Council of Local Governments, I was not able to make that one. And Ron was there, uh, Compensation Committee, I think went very well, you know, they're bringing forward some stuff. Uh, today that we're going to look at and, but they're looking at the employees too and they're, they're, uh, in process with that. Uh, is the best way to explain that is they're, they're moving forward and. This was my first meeting at the Compensation Committee and I was very impressed at, uh. Uh, how it ran and how engaged people were. As far as doing stuff for their, uh, employees and wanting to move things forward, so. Um, Complete Health, Travis nailed it, I mean, it seemed like every meeting we have. A lot of policy changes and touches, touch-ups, but, uh. We did get a new member and we're always looking for more, so, uh, that's it for that. Uh, the W I R monthly teleconference was. Pretty much they were getting geared up for, uh, the Western Interstate Region Conference coming up in March or May. And getting, uh, working, still working on the forest. Stuff that I presented a couple of weeks ago, uh. When they're talking about that smaller timber, the old growth stuff. I, I think I sent out everybody the copy of that resolution. The email from our last meeting, so that was one of the things that they were working on. With that, did attend a couple of events at the Black Hills Stock Show. Um. Went well, looks like them, them guys were busy, was busiest I've seen for a long time, so. With that, that's it. Mr. Drews.
Can I touch on the stock show since you were touching about that? Um, they had some really good horse sales again, they got two point three million, but the numbers still aren't finalized there. And I did not win for showing of my animal, just so you all know, I, I really tried to, I had to pick up my cow and carry it, so.
You have?
I had a, a mini black Angus.
Okay.
That thing walked into the corral and just flopped over and I had to carry it around. The, the screaming baby goat won.
Okay, thanks Travis. Ron Roskinect.
Uh, these are some of the meetings I had, then I'll go into committee reports, uh, Wesley Silverman, I. Invited her to the county administration building, first meeting was with planning and zoning, she's a reporter for the Hill City Paper. Uh, planning and zoning to go over hard rock and ordinance and where that's at. And I think she got all her answers from planning and zoning. Next meeting was with Shannon and, uh, there again she wanted to know what was going on with assessments because, uh. Evidently she's basically getting tax out of her house, uh, in Keystone, so. Uh, if you want more detailed information on that meeting, it's on the front page of this last issue of the Hill City Paper. Uh, Scott Guffey and Joel Milner and myself, we were, met with the new supervisor of the Black Hills National Forest, his name's Sean Cochran. Uh, hopefully he'll be with us, uh, going into the future and won't be temporary like the other six or seven. Uh, our intention of the meeting was to, uh, throughout the idea, we've looked at some private ownership relative to the. New proposed, uh, Hill City Yard and, uh. We had a geotechnical survey which showed the soil conditions would be such that it'd be very expensive, so we, plan B was to go to the Forest Service. And talk about, uh, an exchange with the facility that we got in Hill City, which is technically owned by South Dakota D O T. And or do a thirty-year special use permit similar to what we did with the Silver City Fire Department. Uh, Jim Goobles was, he's our district rancher from Mystic. He was on Zoom and, uh, he was very supportive of that idea and so. The new supervisor, I think he's, uh, on board, we just got some. We got to take baby steps and we got little hurdles to get over, but, uh, it was a good meeting and introductions were made and. Although Scott Guffey didn't have to come to that particular meeting, being sir, he's our natural resources director, I'm glad that he got to meet, uh, Sean as well. Uh, Hill City Housing Trust Fund, so. Under Hill City Economic Development, we created a Hill City Housing Trust Fund. And Greg Litten, who took over from Liz Hamburg with, uh, Black Hills Area Community Foundation, was at that meeting. And, uh, he's helping us navigate the process to create this fund. And he, and Hot Springs just did that and there's other communities that he's trying to get on board, but the important thing about having that trust fund in Hill City. Is that there's thirty million dollars out there and I think five goes to Box Elder, five goes to Rapid City and another twenty's allocated to, to communities across the state. And that hasn't been, I think there's a farm bill out there, but if this bill does get passed, uh. That money will be out there and you have to have a trust. Uh, trust fund board in place to receive any of that, so that was, uh. It's encouraging and hopefully, uh, that bill will, uh, progress further. As I said, I want the peer test plan Senate Bill one thirty-four, we talked about that and we signed the resolution. Building Committee, uh, was basically projects update, uh, there again, there's a building name and we got two buildings that need names and, uh. And they're just taking, uh, I believe, members of the building committee can submit names and, uh. Eventually one of those will get chosen. I did bring up the Verizon lease payment. Uh, Verizon has a lease and I asked Kevin to look into it and, because I knew that, uh, this would be an opportunity to. Adjust the base rent, well, or. Anyhow, we, we found out that although the lease terminates in August, you have to give them six months notice. So. We were left with two days to figure that out, so what, but what will happen, that will go into an automatic renewal. And the, for five years, I believe, with three percent escalators, which, uh, you know, that's encouraging that each year we're going to get. And if we want to do something different with that lease, it'll be probably the next administration that's going to have to sit there and, and deal with that, but. At least we got the lease, uh, we didn't all, as Kevin said the day, we were going to ask Cindy to verify that, uh. Make sure that the payments are getting made and it sounds like they're going to the First Interstate Bank instead of us, so I'm glad we kind of. Dove into that. Uh, and then we had the mayor meeting with, uh, Mary Ellen, or, uh. Jason and Larry Larson and. Jason kind of expressed his concern with some stuff that's coming down the pipeline, one would be the elimination of consumer sales tax. Which the city thrives on sales tax, we don't, but he said if that, was that a constitutional amendment, Gary, do you know? I don't know, it, anyhow, they said they had seventeen thousand votes so far. And I thought he, that would be, that might go to the public, but he said if that.
This must be on the grocery tax.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, this is.
Grocery tax, I was like, I'm confused.
Yeah, that, so that is, that's, uh, probably going to be on the ballot this November.
Right, and he said that could really, uh, have a major impact to the Rapid City and any municipality that clutches sales tax to. To fund their, uh, operation. Uh, another thing that he mentioned was the current water system in Rapid City, the treatment plant over there on Mountain View, he said that thing. Goes back to the late fifties, uh, he just said that there, there's so much infrastructure that's got to be updated relative to. Water system and they, uh, implemented a rate increase of sixty-seven dollars per billing, I think, and that's a five-year. Plan, so I know they're getting a lot of opposition on that, but, uh. You know, it's a concern, you know, it's just trying to fit. Trying to figure out, you know, how, what's going to be important and what's not going to be important because, you know, sooner or later you got to address these, uh. Major expenses and capital outlays. Black Hills Council of Local Governments, it was just pretty much business as usual. Uh, relative to Hill City, uh, they're working on a grant for the Hill City, uh, water tower. Uh, it's coming along, uh. And then. The, the interesting part about that, those meetings, it's just a discussion between all the other members, uh, and what's going on in their communities and. So many other communities are going through the same thing that we are, just vocational rentals and, uh. Infrastructure cost, so I always enjoy, uh, listening to the roundtable, uh. With the, uh, various members and things that are going on in their communities. Planning Commission, that was, uh, uneventful. And then, uh, we, part of the Hills Economic Development. I was asked by Jim Google, he's the district ranger for Mystic, to chair the group. That the Mitchell Lake Project, that's that little lake between the Hill Cities. Former Hill City Sawmill and Hill City, there's a little lake on the side of the highway there and that's, uh. A Forest Service lake, probably built in the thirties or forties, uh, anyhow. They're trying to make, there's three options on the table, one is just to take the lake out. One is to leave it as is and one is to rehabilitate the lake. Uh, that one would be very, very expensive, the. Taking the lake out and enhancing the trout stream, uh, there's actually some two million dollars of government funding to do that. Uh, but that, uh, that, there'll be, uh, a news release and the, and the general public will be informed of, uh, what's going on and we'll see where that goes, but I'm working with Jim. Uh, on a county level with that project. And then we had our planning workshop that, uh, we all attended and, uh. Hard rock mining was, uh, one of the things that we covered.
Thanks, Ron, Deb.
Mine was.
I did not mention the.
Penning County Housing.
Yeah, so can you cover that for me, for, I forgot my notes.
Okay, so for Penning County Housing, basically, um, we gave our employees raises and our department head, which is our C E O, um, Brian. Akbak raises based on state, um, because of our state and federal raise. Um, requirements and I thought that was good, we talked about, basically we're still repositioning, phase two is going well and the funding on that. We're doing well on as well, um. Usually talk about how many V A S vouchers, how many section eight, how many, uh, public housing vouchers, they've moved ahead, they've really made a positive impact on. With Brian on, um, screening people, making sure that, um. Basically based on requirements, um, some people that haven't been, um, up to par unfortunately, through those requirements, um. Have been let go for those instead of before just letting everybody just stay. Um, I like that to a certain extent because it's called respect, you're getting housing, you're getting help. And, uh, he's been efficient and effective with his team and then the people, it adds more. Um, people to housing and what they're doing in housing, um, in way that people have to understand. Um, this is subsidized housing and there should be some respect of what the property and what we're doing. We added cameras and different stuff for that as well, so. It's made a huge difference how some of the changes for people that just think, well, those people just get free housing, well. Some do because they need it, some do because of their incomes, it makes it efficient for our community not to have people, um, being homeless in a sense. And it also shows them that life skills and some of those things are part of learning in order to be a part of our team at, uh, public housing. So I'm, I'm pretty impressed by the repositioning, some of the stuff they're doing. Um, and the team that Brian has there, they haven't had a lot of turnover, so it's been good. Um, healthcare trust board had emergency at my motel that morning, um, my lady is doing well. Um, she's working kind of part-time a little bit right now, but anyway. Um, I did have a meeting with two of the members just to be up to date on it since I have never been on the healthcare trust fund. What I got out of it for benefits and deductibles and some of the things moving forward is the funding of the future of the healthcare trust board and how they're going to make that happen. And also treat the, the employees for the future on that trust, that healthcare trust board, so, um, they're affordable rates. And they work well for percentages for moving forward because you can't go at zero, but maybe they should be a three percent or something every year, so we don't get behind like. Before they had five years where they didn't have any, um, changes and that's huge. If you do no changes and then people get hit with that big change, um, you already know, it becomes a lot to, to function in your budget, so we talked about. You know, how to put that for our employees in their budgets and still make it maintainable for the future for, um, keeping that fund up, so. Um, I appreciated the two members of taking their time out, I had a little bit of time in the morning on Monday, so. I did go to the Black Hills Stock Show and the kickoff, I was a little bit late. Again, we're trying to get that motel open, it should be open by Monday, we're hoping, we had some other, uh, inspections that day that I missed the beginning of the kickoff, but. Um, Stock Show's always been in, um, bare grounds and Ag has always been, uh, part of me, um, learning some of that stuff and. And once I did, I just love it, um, didn't go to legislative, cracker barrel and the planning, uh, workshop I thought was great. Could, I think we could have had more questions from us, but, um, our planning department's pretty efficient and effective on what they're doing. And they do listen well to the public and us as well, so I think they do a great job of moving forward of, of what we need to do. And Alexa's been a huge help in, uh, the planning department, by the way, and what she does for them in a lot of, the litigation parts are just the changes. Um, that makes sense that they need to move forward, we also, like I said, we're going to make some changes with the building, uh, met with the home builders. Um, and that's was some huge changes for, um. Um, them and, uh, the planning department made that happen, so that was with me and Travis, um, did that. And then met with some installers for septic, um, got schooled up a little bit more on septic. Made a huge difference because people think that you need to have an engineer, um, for the septics in order to make sure those move forward, well. If you, um, understand anything about septic, it's the installers. Um, engineer can put their stamp on it in one sense, but the installers are the ones that have to do it and they get it done, so. I believe at this point, um, we shouldn't have to require that engineer's stamp all the time if we don't need it, so. Most of the time we don't because the installer's been doing this for years, but. I like those kind of meetings, like I said, sometimes I have to see pictures, they had to bring pictures, they had to bring different stuff, they had to line it out on the board. Um, I like that because some of us never had a septic tank at our house and I've been doing this for a while, but it's always nice to be, um. Kind of refreshed, so appreciated their time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
Uh, Gary and I did attend a cracker barrel a week and a half ago, so we had Dave Johnson, Helene Dohamel, Steve Duffy. Becky Drury and Mike Derby. Good open discussion.
Is there anything else for the go of the business? Saying none. I would look for a motion to go into executive session through S D C L one twenty-five two one. For personnel issues and S D C L one twenty-five dash two three for contractual pending litigation.
Chairman, can I ask you a question?
I have a motion.
Oh, sorry.
I got, had a motion.
I make a.
Prove.
Second.
And seconded by Lauster, Ms. Hagga. I need a second by Lester, Ms. Hancock.
So I was going to meet with Carol on the, on the department head wage, if we could continue that, because I don't think I could just go back there and come back and make a decision. So for me, I'm in agreement with some of the, what's happening on here, so it'd be nice to continue and have the time to actually meet with her and see some of the areas that we just discussed up on the dais here.
I would go to the commission. I'll have to remind the commission that next meeting I will not be here. I'd have to try and call in.
Mr. Chair, I mean, my recommendation after talking to Carol, and I did tell her, because I did have a sit-down meeting with her, I do have some concerns, not concerns in that they're trying to do the right thing, but concerns in the data, some of the data, and I told her where my concerns were on that. And if we approve it now and without looking at how it's going to impact the budget, why not wait until June? And if we're going to make a motion to accept the changes, we look at that so we can see how the budget is for 2025, because most of those impact for 2025. There's one that we may need to address right away. I agree with that one. But the others, I think if this is a proposal for what moves forward in 2025, approving it now may not be the right thing. Maybe we should wait and see a difference in the budget, how the new numbers with the old numbers, so we see what we're up against when it comes to the budget.
I think we do have a motion going to executive session. I think we can come out and...
Discuss that.
Discuss it.
Okay.
So I do have a motion to go into executive session for personnel and contractual. In the second, all in favor indicate by saying hi.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to command of executive session.
Aye.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Hancock to command executive session. First item of business is department head wage review.
You need a motion, sir.
Yes.
Or a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
I think we can continue the department head wage review, only because I have talked to Carol and I'd like some time to be able to look at the different wages. I've looked at a few of them and they look like they're moving forward in a positive way, but at this point, I haven't had time in five days to, to go through this packet. If not, I'll be voting no, and I'll tell you those reasons why after if we're not going to have time to have this continued.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd offer a substitute motion that we...
There's no motion on the floor, so it'd be...
Pardon me, I thought you made a...
I made a continuing motion.
Second.
Continuous motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd offer a substitute motion that we move forward with the recommendations on the wage study for department heads.
I'll second that motion.
Substitute motion to move forward by Drews and seconded by Roskin.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I got the chance to sit down with Carol, and I gave her my concerns, and my concerns aren't that our department heads shouldn't be paid what they're worth. I do believe that there are some corrections and some things that need to be addressed, so I'm in support of the fact that we're working towards the right to make those corrections. The question is, what's the right option? What, how is it all impacting? And that's why I would like to continue it, but I'll be a no on moving forward with it at this moment in time. Carol is very well aware of my concerns, the things that I felt that we need to take in consideration as well as you all heard, and so that's why I'll be voting no.
Chair.
Somebody else want to speak before Hancock speaks for a second time?
I haven't spoken on this yet. I haven't spoken on this yet, right?
Yeah, you did, and then you made the motion.
That's speaking on the motion on the floor?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. So we've had a lot of wage exceptions at this point, and adding this to it without me being able to go through it and see how it affects people's budgets. We've affected the wage study a lot by the exceptions that we made so far, and at this point, I haven't seen how they made the changes in the budget. So if I don't know how many departments have made changes and what those percentages are and how much money that is, I think it's not being fiscally responsible. Then adding more to that in 2024 for budget time by adding, like Travis said, I'm not against this. In fact, I was one of them that wanted to move it forward, but I want to see how the budget, you just don't go and make changes like we keep doing. And this is between $100,000 and $83,000, depending if it's option one or two. Did we decide if it was option one or two? Because I thought there was two options on the floor in this paper, so is it the $100,000 or the $83,000? So that plus our insurance going up and some other things, I kind of want to know how to be fiscally ready for 2025 and how much we've already affected the 24. Because at this point, do we know, and commissioners, maybe you guys know how much you've affected those budgets, because I don't. For me, as a commissioner, that's my main responsibility to anybody, let alone the taxpayers and myself, is to make sure those budgets are going to balance and we don't have to supplement or take those reserves down to the point that it may cause some issues for us in 25. So if anybody maybe knows that answer, that would be nice to know, but how much have we affected the budget at this time by the exceptions and the changes, and how much are we going to add to it with this $100 or $83,000?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Drews.
So last year, the Compensation Committee, I believe, spent considerable time working on overall wages, not just on department heads, but at the direction of this commission in June, they did move forward with the review of department head wages. I know the amount of time that they spent on that, I was part of the Compensation Committee for a portion of the year. I believe that the recommendations that moved forward, understanding the time that was spent doing it, that they should be dealt with in a timely fashion. And I think waiting on this takes it out of that equation. So I'm going to encourage us to support this motion to move forward with adoption of the wage, wage review that was done by the Compensation Committee and presented by HGR.
So Chair, if nobody else is going to speak, I'd like to rebut that.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I was on the Compensation Committee as well, and I love the Compensation Committee. We have, we had a really good group and we have a really good group. But when we said that, and I also was one, and Carol can say that to be a fact, I wanted to do, everybody, if we're going to move two other people forward, which I appreciated, but at the time, I didn't know we were going to keep making exceptions for other people in between that are some pretty exceptional exceptions to the budget. So if I knew that at the time, I probably wouldn't have, and then I quit, as you guys know, making exceptions because I didn't know how much it was going to affect the budget. So there was pretty substantial, maybe 30 different exceptions in there before we even did the wage study for the review for the department heads. So again, Compensation Committee does a really good job, but we are the ones making the final decision on how we affect the budget. So I'm going to have to disagree with Commissioner Drews because back then, that was in June and last six months, like I said, unless you know, anybody knows in here, how much have we affected the 2024 budget by many things, not just wages? And now we're going to start to affect it again by this review. And I'm not in disagreement because I truly believe that we need to do something with department heads and, I believe, Audra, because she's at 94, and I had talked to Carol about that today, something positive, which I appreciate that she's reviewing that department head again, just because of some of the things that came out with the other exceptions. So thank you for doing that, Ms. Carol. I think it was a positive and it's something that I suggested in the first place when I first did the first elected official, so thank you for doing that. I don't know what the outcome's going to be, but at least you're listed to your commission. So for me, again, it's not the not wanting to do it, it's how much is affected on the budget, and I don't think anybody so far has told me all the different things, and maybe I need to go to the county auditor and ask how much we've been affecting the budget by all the changes from different things with buildings, wages, and other stuff that we've been adding to it, so, and insurance.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I don't think that by kicking the can down the road, we're doing justice to our department heads. I'm looking at a 67-page report that I thought was very elegantly put together by Human Resources. And with that being said, I thank you, Carol, for being so thorough in that report, and I think it's time to act today and support our department heads.
My comment would be the same. It started back in June, they've been told about it, and actually, in the Compensation Committee meeting, they said move forward with it. That was their recommendation. We tried to say, yeah, let's do these all at once, but what we received, the input we received back was to move forward with it, and so I agree with that. The motion on the floor right now is to move forward with this or to deny it. That's the substitute motion. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two noes. Motion carries, from a no from Lester and Hancock. So next, I would need a motion for motion number one.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Move to approve reclassification of the Director of Equalization position from C42 to D61 and place Shannon Ripberger at D61, step 29, $4,804 biweekly, effective February 18th, 2024. Second.
Moved by Roskin, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No from Lester and Hancock. Motion carries.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to approve the placement of the following department heads. Davis Purcell at D61, step 14, $3,988 biweekly. Carol Bancroft at D62, step 21, $4,530.40 biweekly. Barry Tice at D62, step 25, $4,761.60 biweekly. Joe Miller at D62, step 24, $4,702.40 biweekly. Lori Wagler at D62, step 27, $4,881.60 biweekly. Scott Guffey at D61, step 26, $4,628.80 biweekly. Brittany Molitor at D61, step 24, $4,514.40 biweekly. And Eric Witcher at D64, step 32, $5,740.80 biweekly. All to be effective February 18th, 2024.
Second.
Second, moved by Drews, seconded by Roskin. Any discussion?
Chair, so some of these people got $10,000 to $15,000 raises, guys, and they just got a 4% earlier, and then a step. That's a huge increase, and if your public can't... I don't know anybody in the public that these gets these kind of raises. Like I said, we need to look at the fiscal responsibility of giving raises and giving exceptions at this point with this. You're moving people up eight steps. That means we've stepped behind or we're just doing a wage study for the budget in 25 that we're going to implement, but we've done, what, I don't know, how many exceptions before then, and then we just moved department heads. Like I said, I'm not against department heads. What I need to know is how much we're spending. 2024, our job is to know how much we're spending. How much have we spent already on exceptions and moving people up? And then we gave them wages. We gave $7,000 and $6,000 and $14,000 raises with 4% added on that, and then a step. So you've got people in the county that, let's do comparables around the state, let's do comparables in different areas, and we have compared to Sioux Falls, 110,000 people in Pennington County, maybe 120. Those comparables do not compare with other counties. I'm sorry, if you have 800,000 in Sioux Falls, we are not comparable. The service is always good in Pennington County, but they serve, and what they serve to is a lot more population. So if you're doing comparables, there's a lot of comparables that should be done. Now, people that time a service, I always thought more people should get more money since they've dedicated their time with us, and if they've done their job efficiently, effectively, and should get a merit, yeah, I think some of these should be moved up. Some of them, in some cases, I think we gave merits for things maybe we shouldn't have as much, but still could give pay increases to people. I think what happens when you do $10,000 to $15,000 raises to your department heads and your people and you're running a company, what happens to the people below? I already know from the city, you caused some major issues. We're losing people already, and you don't think with these kind of raises, that the people below are going to have issues because they already are. Just saying, make, make substantial differences when you say it, and when you're going to do it, make sure you have the budget. And it wasn't 67 pages, otherwise Ms. Carol and me probably wouldn't have had that in the conversation because it would have been explained a little bit different. But again, I'm fiscally responsible, I couldn't run my company this way, and I like communication, and I think we lack that a lot here. And for me to ask for you to continue it just to make sure I had that communication, because five days is not enough. If it was 67 pages instead of this, this packet right here, I probably would have went through it and been able to understand it. So I didn't think it was asking too much, especially if we're trying to be fiscally responsible and try to do those percentages and explain it to them, to the employees that make a difference for us. Because it's not just about department heads, it's about employees, that keeping and retaining them for the future based on what we're doing to people that are supposed to be the leaders of this, this county. So that's our job, and so my job is, is to try to be fiscally responsible and do the right thing and get the information I need in order to do that, and today I did not. So I'm not against department heads and your raises, I'm against not being able to take the time and the courtesy of that to get the information by fact.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one...
I said no.
Two noes. Okay. Next, we, like I promised, we talked to Central State's Fair Board, and I'll probably ask Ron to come up, or Jerry to give a few comments, but the consensus was that no metal detectors and... Okay. Some signage changes and the direction is that you are going to work together with Jay Elderman to bring back a document that will be acceptable to the commission.
Sure, we appreciate the time to be before you. I'm Ron Jeffrey, General Manager of Central State's Fair. We appreciate all the effort that's gone into trying to move in a direction that will continue to keep the fair a safe and family-friendly place to go. We appreciate everything that Sheriff Mueller's doing to make sure we continue to upgrade and improve on our law enforcement presence, and so we're, we're moving forward in the proper direction.
Right. Any other comments?
My name is Jerry Kell, President of the issued Board of Directors for Central State's Fair, and our whole focus has been successful events, and part of that is, is safety events. And for this next year, we've, we've talked about scanners and removing them, and the board is agreeable to that, and it would change some signage, but still, ultimate goal is to make it a safe and enjoyable event.
Thanks, Jerry. I do want to make the comment that I think the board felt was important that the Pennington County Board of Commissioners strongly support the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America and Article 6, Section 24 of the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and the board strongly believes that it is the right of the citizens of Pennington County to keep and bear arms for the defense of life, liberty, and property. So I just wanted to make sure I clarified that and then make sure I asked Mr. Lester if he had any final comments.
I just want to say, thanks for listening to us, listening to the, to the public. I hope when it's all said and done, we can move forward in knowing that our end goal is to have a safe and county fair and make sure that we're doing what's right by the citizens as well.
And thank you guys for jamming this all together while we're still doing the Stock Show. That was amazing. With that, I would look for...
Brian?
Brian, sorry. Sorry.
He was standing there.
I looked at you once, and I, go ahead, Brian.
Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, and I just appreciate everybody working over this last several months together, worked very closely together with the Fair Board, Ron Jeffries and the staff, and I just want to let you know that I will continue to use all of the resources available under the Office of Sheriff, and then continue to leverage our great partnerships with the Rapid City Police Department, Court Services, all the entities that we've used as resources before to keep that fair, very safe, friendly, family-friendly event, and we're going to continue to do that into the future. So, thank you for everybody's attention on this matter, and it's, we look forward to moving this forward.
Very good, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
And just for the public, we're going to have another comeback on the mark, in March, the first meeting in March?
Yes, and just for the record, it'll be at the end of the meeting again. So, but yeah, we're hoping to get something drafted by the first meeting in March and bring it back that the commission, we can all sign and agree upon.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So, moved?
Moved by Lester.
Second.
Seconded by Hancock, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?